Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, May 12, 2025. We have several items for discussion tonight. We're pleased to have all of you here, and those of you who are joining us from home, welcome. It's always a pleasure to have everyone either at home or virtual, so, or in person, rather. The first item tonight is our Joint Planning Commission Meeting to review the work plan. After this, I'll call in Chair Combs and the Planning Commission members to introduce themselves. We'll need to get you a microphone, Ellen, so maybe Mr. Branser can share between the two of you, and then, yeah, we can share there. That'd be great.
Is that better?
Much.
Much better. Yes, Phil, Chair Combs is not with us tonight. My name is Ellen Talbo. I'm Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, and I will let my colleagues introduce myself if that's acceptable.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sure, Philip Lintold, Planning Commission.
Robert Estrada.
Mark Aaron.
Sharon Wallace.
And Lynn Marsen.
Well, welcome. Thank you all for your amazing service on the Planning Commission and for joining us tonight. So the floor is yours.
All right. Well, I guess the first item before us tonight is the Planning Commission Work Plan and Significant Accomplishments. This is essentially a summary of what you have assigned us so far. And so we have essentially, you know, we've elected our, I'm just running down the bullet items here. We have elected our leadership for the year. We reviewed the Lakewood Tree Assessment Report, and there was some discussion in that meeting where I think some of us wanted to continue to have discussion, especially about the data in that report. So at some point, we may want to have that come back as an item to us. And then we heard from Mr. Gumm about the five-year CBDB/CDBG Home Consolidated Housing Plan. We further reviewed the shoreline restoration activities, and we got through, we have had much discussion over the last few months about the MFTE and the RTA boundaries, which we'll further discuss tonight. We are also getting through the resolution of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Cycle. And then finally remaining, we have some other items to continue to discuss. I will skip over the annual development regulations, but we will also get to the 2026 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Cycle docket. Last meeting, and I think the meeting prior, we had a presentation from Miss Spear about the Natural Environment and Climate Change Program, and we also discussed the six-year Transportation Improvement Program, and we also discussed the Planning Commission Rules and Procedure. So just a short summary, if my colleagues would like to add, I don't want to speak on behalf of them, but if there's anything you want to speak on.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, council members. I think the big message we want to deliver tonight is the Planning Commission has been hard at work. We've been engaging with community members. We had a packed house around the MFTE and RTA Boundary Discussion, lots of engagement, lots of good conversation. And I hope that we have provided you with a good start to your discussions around these topics. Everybody here has been participating and generated fruitful discussion, and for that, I'm thankful for their service and appreciate you allowing us to be here with you this evening.
Well, very good. It's kind of open for some discussion. It's about the work plan, and, you know, we know through Mr. Boki as the liaison, that you've been working on a lot of things, and we've certainly read the meeting minutes and appreciate all the work, much of which is presented tonight in terms of the comprehensive plan amendments in the packet for the year. So we'll review that at some length. I assume, Miss Spear, that the Planning Commission will stay with us for that presentation if they'd like. Yeah, and we certainly see the work that's gone into that through the recommendations that are coming forward that we are just reviewing tonight. So that'll be helpful. But just, you know, before we turn to that, is there anything, and let me just open the floor to get the conversation started. So, for example, on the RTA Extension Discussion, we sent that back to you as part of the work plan this year. And as I understand, council's rationale, we sent it back to make sure that we had more robust public conversation input. And is it fair to say that that's what you received and made part of the recommendation as a result of that?
Yeah, I think so. I think, I think what I witnessed over the course of at least three meetings is we had quite a large turnout, larger than I would have expected, and we had quite a, we did have a mixed bag, but largely, I think the comment that we heard was, you know, was, had very passionate reasons for not wanting to see the boundary extended. And although my colleague, Mr. Combs, isn't here, he also raised some very good points as well about, I think, the use of the tool of MFTE and its use as a tool in land value capture, and, you know, using that as a productive tool for the city going forward. So he, at least, I think he offered some good points on that front, too, but at least from a public comment perspective, you know, people were very passionate about not wanting to see, or I guess, you know, not feeling that their neighborhood or that the fabric of the city is, you know, affected adversely, so.
Ms. Talbot, did you get the sense through the robust conversation that there was, while a concern for the extension of the defined area of the RTA within which the MFT can be applied, was there a recognition that that area is currently zoned for multifamily, the capability of it being constructed there notwithstanding the MFT?
Yeah, I think there were, I mean, I think we did receive some comments that recognize that, that yes, that the that the zoning in that area is already zoned for the use that is wanting to be in there, that is applied to be in there, so.
Okay. Any questions of council members? Yes, Bob.
One of the comments that was expressed not only by colleagues, but also by the public was, instead of expanding the RTA, why don't we incentivize areas that are already established?
I'm sorry, that or what?
The area that's already been established. Why are we trying to expand when we should, that's not, that wasn't the original goal in the first place. We had established an area, and it seemed like that didn't quite work, so let's try something else.
Okay.
Why don't we try to just incentivize that particular area instead of, instead of expand? I heard that not only from my own colleagues, but also from the public. And why don't we?
And I personally think this is helpful to hear. This is kind of why we're here. We have once, once a year shot to really get together and chat about something, not just your work plan, but issues of interest to you and certainly to the community. So I appreciate this. I'm sure others do as well. We'll have some further conversation. Mr. Lindholm.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us tonight. I think one other piece, too, was it wasn't just, oh, it was a flat now. We had a lot of folks who said, maybe just not yet. Let's see Alliance get built. Let's see Barnes and Noble relocate. Let's see the town center fill up a bit. You know, we have somewhere between 65,000, 80,000 square feet of commercial footage there that's vacant. Let's see that get full, and then we'll talk.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I think we should highlight in this discussion, this is more for the staff. When this came back to the Planning Commission initially, there was, there were some voices in the community that said, we didn't know this was going on. And I just, I want to tip the cap to the staff because there was a huge lift to stand up neighborhood, new neighborhood associations, your coffeehouse events. That started this conversation outside of here and really fed into what ultimately was this room filling up for those MFTE discussions. But I think without those kind of feeder events, we may not have had as much interest as we ended up getting. And anything we can do to encourage that type of back and forth and that dialogue with our citizens and our residents is phenomenal. So Christopher and Miss Spear and everybody else who's out there doing all those extra things, I think it made a big difference in this discussion.
Great. That's always good to hear. Any other thoughts or comments, gentlemen, ladies, Mr. Branser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you all the commission members for both, all the work that you've done, identified in the work plan. And, you know, particularly on a couple of topics that we, as a council, were unsure what we wanted to do, and we sent them back to you to sort of distill to do that. But I have, I have a question in that, you know, over the past four years, okay, there's been a conscious effort on our part, but also within the state about do that, about trying to make sure that civil discourse around issues that maybe there is disagreement is still civil. And the demeanor and the nature of comments to do that. And I would say that to an adequate extent, that's occurred in terms of things that have occurred before the council. But I am curious as to how you found the meetings of where there was a lot of interest and a lot of people, and as you mentioned, compassionate thoughts, whether we still operated as a city, both residents and commissioners and others, and did it stay civil?
I think that, I, I think that the sentiment that we heard was strong for various areas. I mean, we heard from environmental, we heard from folks with a strong environmental concern about the quality of the creek nearby and even habitat, and of course, the beloved trees. And that's, I think, that, I mean, that was one area that, that is one bucket, I guess, of passion. And then, and then we heard from the development community, who also wants to see opportunity available and expanded, and then wants to ensure that there's, that there's, I think, a vibrancy that we all want to see as they see it from the development perspective. I think we also heard from folks that just in and around the neighborhood feel that very strongly about the Clover Park Shops. And I, I think we recognize that, that the discussion of the boundary of the RTA is separate from, is a separate matter from the Clover Park Shops. So that is one thing that, you know, that is one thing that we, as a commission and members, You know, that is one thing that we as a commission and members all have to weigh individually and collectively. But definitely there is, I think, a um. Whether it's informed or misinformed, but there is a perception that that the shops are affected and that and and that is very important to people because. Those businesses and that that um character of the area has has been longstanding for so long. And so there is a lot of. Passion about, you know, not wanting to see that adversely affected with. With with what may be uh visions of of, you know, huge scale apartments. So I would say that. I think the long-winded short answer to your question for me is is that. You know, we we heard testimony in terms of like civil, um I think people were. Were civil in the the best way that they could, but they were very passionate.
As Ms. Talbot pointed out, the the voices of Lakewood are many and diverse and we heard. Many different points of view and very impassioned voices. What we did not see was disrespect or a dev- devolving of the discussion. I I think the framers would have been proud to see how that discourse unfolded uh here in our city. And I I think it points out that Lakewood is many things to many people, but to all of us, it is home. And that's something we take great pride in and the way in which we conduct business. Uh both here at the council and the planning commission and from from our folks uh out in the community. It's it's one continuous thread. And I I took meetings with with folks who had opposing points of view, uh you know, at the same time. And it was good to have that, hear all those different perspectives and see that come to life and and what the. Actual impact to those folks might be or what they thought it might be. And then also see them come in and deliver those points uh in a in a respectable way.
Was there any um discussion? Based on the public comment and your kind of robust roundtabling among the commission members? Of maybe restricting the recommendation that ran all the way down to the end of the CBD. To just perhaps the area circumscribed by the entrance to the town center. So basically from. Avondale to. Maybe beyond a hundredth, just that area in front and not anywhere near the Clover Park shops, but just the area that kind of is circumscribed by the entrance. To the town center on both hands.
We did not, so. In or in in the beginning of talks, we mostly talked about the end of the CBD. All the way down to Nianza. Um I think towards the end, when we took action was really when we started to. Contemplate the the boundaries before us, but really what we what we really stuck to was the map that was. That was presented in front of us. And so and so we collectively thought that, yeah, it's fair to incorporate. I call it the blip, but um to incorporate the the zone just at a hundredth street. Um so that we can keep parcels together and, you know, not keep inconsistency in that area. We thought that that was fair.
That's the little blip we see on the recommendation coming to us?
Yes, that's the area, pink area, just I think north of a hundredth street. Um but then further south between a hundredth street to Nianza, I think is where we uh. There wasn't, to to short answer to your question, no, there wasn't um. Um a lot of discussion in flexing the possibility of flexing the boundary in between that area.
Very good. Council members, any other questions? I think this is helpful to hear your perception of the. Comment and how that informed your decisions. I think that's to me helpful. Council member Laura Sella.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I'll just echo a little bit of what Mr. Estrada said. That's what I've heard as well is. Uh the MFT is intended to be a tool that we use to incentivize development in the specific areas that we want, right? Uh and if that's not working, we don't necessarily move the areas that we want, but we find better ways to incentivize in those areas. So I I I've heard that as well from our community, so I appreciate what uh what Bob said. Thank you.
Yeah, there were some uh comments from members of the public that talked about if we were going to incentivize anything, we should incentivize. To ensure that there's. The mixed use opportunity to sustain small businesses in that mixed use opportunity. And yet we hear back. That mixed use doesn't work. Uh and you you know, those of us who kind of went through the downtown suburbia plan really believed that mixed use would be appropriate. In the town center area, but we haven't seen much of it come to fruition. So what what did you hear and and what has been your discussion on that point?
Yeah, I would say I think that's that's kind of where I feel, I think. I feel like that's kind of where we started. In fact, Mr. Herr and I were in strong agreement that um that that. Could, you know, that we would like to see ideally, ideally in a perfect world, we could attract some mixed use with ground four. Ground ground floor retail um for five story maybe. Uh that, yeah, four or five story maybe of living units above. And because that's the type of, I think, um. And you know, that's the type of uh environment and 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 attractiveness that. That ideal would be nice to see. I think as we held those, as we talked about those discussions and actually learned from Mr. Remac and Miss Spear and. I I think, and even my colleague, Mr. Combs, um. I think we learned that the timing and the 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 ease for which that type of development. Can come in is really difficult right now and um the market conditions. Uh to attract that type of development um is not quite um. We're not quite there, I guess, so to be plain.
Was there any discussion whether or not an MFTE, if applied, conditioned on mixed use? Might be more workable from a market perspective or not?
I think that's where, I think that's, yes, I mean, there was, there was advocacy towards the idea. Um that that MFTE is a way to encourage um. Just that, you know, is is a is a way to encourage development, so therefore it's a way to encourage perhaps that development. But at the same time, even uh Mr. Mr. Combs noted that um that that. Attracting that type of development right now is very expensive. Um and it's very hard to finance. And so it's very, that's the difficulty of of attracting that type of of development.
Mr. Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and and I'll just make a comment. I share the mayor's frustration because we as a body had these very high hopes that. We would see mixed use in the in the town center and it hasn't happened. It's it 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 really is a. Um a frustration, I think, for us as a body. It's certainly for me individually and I know I know the mayor feels the same way. But I would also, I would echo those remarks. I drive by three new very large apartment complexes built. Uh in central Tacoma and I'm waiting. And and two of them have been open now four months and that I think they're pretty well full. The other one just opened. And I don't know that a square foot of the commercial space is used yet. And I think what. Commercial space they might be using in the future, they're they're essentially giving it away to not-for-profit. So. It's not working and I don't know why and um. Um that's not my bailiwick, but.
And the hope was that that would help incentivize small businesses to locate there and have a vibrant walkable community and.
So high hopes, but it hasn't happened yet. Um. I I really do commend the work of the of the planning commission. It was very, very difficult work. I mean, it was a lot of hearings. We have now, um even though it was pointed out by staff that it wasn't a zoning change, so it didn't. You know, we we had properly done the hearings. I know our staff is always accused by people of not uh allowing public hearings and whatnot. And we're doing things in the dark. It those accusations were completely untrue. Um they had umpteen hearings over now. It seems like, seems like six months, but it's four or five. Things got conflated, I would say, between what is zoning change is and what the zoning is and what a MFTE is. But I do think there were good discussions and I always say there's always going to be good discussions over the MFT because I don't know that it works, right? Either, but we in in our state, we're we're told that. This is one of the few tools that we have and we just approved one last week. So um very, very hard work on this subject. And and I think we're going to have a robust discussion around it either tonight or and going into the future. So, but thank you for your efforts on this. It was very difficult and and um. And maybe we made it too difficult for you, right? By by maybe adding. I mean, this thing in front of us has four or five facets to it, when really maybe one. It should have been four different ordinances rather than one might have been helpful on this, so. But that's for our knowledge going forward.
Well, to the extent we erred on anything, we erred on the side of some caution to send it back to you to get more. Public participation to make sure people felt that their voices were heard and fleshed out. And that's always a good thing. You know, there's a comment I saw recently that it's very difficult to articulate good public policy. Without good public input, right? So we want to try to do the best we can at creating good public policy. And so if we ask for public comment, we should be prepared to receive it and receive it. We did. So that's good. Uh Mr. Pearson, Mr. Bransitter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um was was there any discussion about, you know, leaving some of the areas in or out as it, you know, as you go south? From just south of the library site down towards a hundred and twelve, was there any talk about maybe. Keeping some of them in the proposed expansion area and not, you know, and taking some out was. Or was it all pretty overwhelming that, you know, folks wanted nothing to do with anything west of of Gravely Lake? Or could you elaborate on any of that kind of nuance?
I don't think that we got into the weeds um parcel by parcel to distinguish. Um, you know, which which parcel should stay or or whatnot. I think because there was so much. Feedback about. The Clover Park shops that that really steered and I think. Set the tone for the discussion, but to your question, no, we didn't get into like the particulars of. Of should it end at this parcel or just here or just here. Um I would say that one of the points that I did bring up during all of our discussions is that the area. I don't think is well served by transit and the idea of in in one. In one sense and in in one play is that the RTA, um you know, this is part of our regional growth center. And our regional growth center is a is a designation that we um. That we use in our in in our um. In our, uh what do I call it, in our planning scenarios with with uh with PSRC for regional funds. And so the the role that in one sense that that. The role that transit plays and and being served multimodalism and um. And and this area being served by transit, I at least, that was a point that I brought to the discussion that I didn't think that. That um that this area was 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 as better served as other areas further north in the RTA boundary. And for example, the pink area, the the pink area on the map that was proposed uh to us around a hundredth street. For example, that is an area that is served by dual routes, so it is better served by transit. So for that. For that angle, it did make sense to incorporate that area into the downtown as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um no horse is too dead to beat, but are you ready to move on to some other items on the work plan?
Certainly. We can do that. Well, that that is the the work plan discussion, but then the comprehensive plan amendments really are Miss Spear leading us through those. So if we're done with the work plan discussion, then the next study session item would would.
So so I had a couple of, for the commissioners, a couple of inquiries about the work plan, particularly the. Remaining work plan items. Um and um. The the last item here says updated planning commission rules of procedure. Do you find the current procedures constraining? Or is there is there is there is there is there some change to to the procedures that? Would make being a commissioner easier?
Uh, Mr. Branster, I can speak to that. Um so the majority of the changes that you'll see, uh I believe, coming forward are. Are largely administrative in nature. Titles and and things like that. Now, I think the biggest change to the way business is done had to do with. Um time limits and and how they are assigned to speakers during public comment to more line up with what happens during city council. Public hearing. Um for instance, when when one person speaks as an individual and also that same individual speaks for a group. They get two separate three-minute periods and that wasn't clearly defined in in our rules of procedure. I think the remaining things, again, were mostly administrative in nature.
Well, you know, I I I'd say that having that as an item on your work plan is. Periodically is something that's healthy. Uh we on the council sort of had discussions of that nature. Right at the beginning of the year this year and made some changes to our rules, okay, to be able to go and do that. With a with a view of uh of of trying to make ourselves more efficient, okay? Um and maybe to some extent improving our mental health. I don't know. That goes off over there. Uh the other item that's on here is the the natural environment and climate change. Uh program launch and that was uh something that the the council approved launching such a program. To be able to go and do that, but without uh. Without a very specific framework uh in terms of going through to do that. So I think that that's uh that's something that we're we're looking for you to to go and do and uh. I would I would tell you to um take a look at the and 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 that is. Is something that is a multi-year uh effort going forward with a. A a a recommend recognition that out in the community, there are many who see. Different aspects of the natural environment and of and of that, that they that they feel that the 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 city should be. Doing some proactive things for. And so your discussions around that, I think, are going to be important to us. In in terms of 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 looking at 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 how how that would develop it and uh. You know, will and will be informative to us, but more importantly to uh. The staff who are going to end up with the 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 heavy lifting on implementing. Uh such a program, but it but that it's uh uh but that it's important. So I'm glad to see that it's. It's on your your plan to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One of my concerns regarding the climate initiative was that. Seeing the the emphasis, shall we say, federal the emphasis on climate initiatives. How was that going to affect us here? Something simple like, for example, the Energy Star. Well, it's in our pro- program that we're supposed to push for that, you know? Uh but yet if that program was away, then that decreases our own. So then I was told by staff, well. We really don't know at this point in time. Because who knows, it may change because so many things have changed. Tariffs change from one day to the other, you know? So maybe this will change also. So but I'm so concerned about that, that our own programs will diminish.
Did you have something, Mr. Herr?
I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, we live in a a a fast-changing environment with regard to national policy. And also uh the influence out of the state legislature and. and and also uh the influence out of the state legislature and bills that were passed in the recent session. So uh, of course, we will have to respond as those uh items become active law. And I have no doubt that our staff will respond appropriately and will take take action as necessary.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, one question that I'm asked is that the city has set a tree canopy goal of forty percent. And yet everywhere we look, we see trees being cut down without like replacement or no replacement at all. Just clear cut and then you lose, you know, three truckloads of mature fir trees. What what is the city's plan? I mean, I, there's so much turmoil now in the government over what we're going to do, what the environmental impacts are that it's hard to tell people we have a plan when we don't seem to have one. We just, they can, they have a right, they have property, do whatever they want. They do. And that's it. And we just lose more and more and more. So some guidance would be very helpful.
I might beg to differ on that unless you receive that feedback from staff because we spend a lot of time putting a tree code into place and with mitigation measures and to the extent there's any clear cutting without a nod and to the code, then that would be problematic. And I would be surprised to hear that from our staff that there are activities out there where people are clear cutting trees without some homage and attention to the existing city code. I could be wrong, but I think.
Well, I can tell you there's one right right now where it is, that they just took three truckloads out and it's completely clear cut. They're going to put houses on. So I I mean, I'm not.
You should raise that to staff. I mean, any member of the public.
Raised early on before they cut the trees. When they were all marked. So anyway, I, you know, so I think that we say these things, but they still occur. And so I get.
But factually, it could be true or it could be inaccurate and we have to work collectively to avoid inaccurate facts being spun because if those were taken down, unless I hear from you that you checked to see if whether or not a permit was issued for it, I don't know factually what happened.
And I can tell you that a permit was issued for all of that without without a remedy to plant an equivalent amount of trees. And so that and that.
Is that consistent with our code or not consistent with our code from what you're telling me?
Doesn't really address it that way. It just says we have a goal of forty percent and it doesn't get into specifics, which I think is not inappropriate.
Maybe we can have Mr. Remack just address it real quickly because I want to clear this up. It's a fair point. But I think it's really important that we operate on a body of fact as opposed to opinion.
So the the tree code, we look at it as three, you know, well, I'll just kind of walk through it. When we first look at it, it is for retention. That's the first item that we look for. If you can actually construct and still retain the trees, that's the goal. If you have a significant tree of significance. At the same time, before a person is able to remove a tree, they come in with an arborist report. That arborist report does a full assessment of the trees that we're looking at. Many of the times the trees we look at can be very healthy. There's other ones, though, when they're looked at, they're not, right? And that's not something we see from the street. So when we do the assessment and they come in for a tree removal permit, that's part of it when they look at it as to what trees are healthy, what ones need to be removed because they're a danger and what we look at. We also speak to like trying to retain site assessment when we look at it. Can you actively place the buildings without removing all the trees? If they can't, there is replacement quota that they can look at. That is one of the options. There is also the option for them to go ahead and repay in lieu of replanting. So when they look at that, its money is into the urban tree fund that we look at, which we're still getting ready to stand that program up as we're moving through it. It's part of the ones we're actively working on replanting elsewhere in the city. So the mitigation that comes in does exist, but it's not always what people are seeing or what they would like to see in terms of where it is. Because if it's a larger unbuilt process, you know, parcel, it is going to have a greater tree on it. You're going to see a larger tree removal from it. But Gary Oaks have a different standard also when we look at it. So we're careful with those as to whether they come down or do or do not. Even to the point where some Gary Oaks that are listed as maybe not by the arborist as being, you know, they're going to survive. They still stand because they're not as likely to fall down. When we look at it, there's an arborist assessment that goes with that. So trees are not taken lightly in what we look at. And if they do come in and they remove, that actually is, you know, considered malicious cutting per the code and has up to a three times hit that can see. So we're very cautious when we look at that as well, um, because when they come in, was it actively called out as to what they looked at? Did they violate the code? And if they do, then we go after to recoup that money. Does it go ahead and rebuild the tree or replace the tree that's right there? No. Does it give us the ability to increase in other areas? We can increase density of trees throughout the city. Yes, it does. So the code does exist, but I would say it doesn't meet the standard necessarily what everybody would like to see. But we are moving in the right direction and it's um quite stringent compared to some other jurisdictions that you can look at.
But fair point. Thank you for bringing up this loss. I appreciate it.
Do appreciate that. I would just say that having written the documentation that was submitted to the city, I can say that the data um was provided and it was not exactly followed.
Uh, okay, in this instance, yeah.
In this instance.
Fair, fair point.
But anyway.
No, I appreciate it. It's a good discussion and we're going to move through the work plan pretty quick, but go ahead, Mr. Larson.
As well, the uh the very study that says that uh and and that the council has so far agreed uh it should be forty percent of City of Lakewood. And uh we've done some original, some early research that questions that what that is forty percent of. The uh planning commission originally recommended twenty-six percent. The uh advocacy group uh went uh direct to the council and of course, that's your privilege to change what we do. Uh, I've gone back and looked and asked the consultants who did the most recent study, very highly qualified expert people. I don't think they've chosen a more qualified group to do it. Uh, when asked whether they what they were counting in terms of plantable lands. Uh, their reply was they didn't have enough money in the budget of the report to do a close uh count of that. So they extracted the lakes and a certain amount of Interstate five. Uh, the City of Lakewood, on my research, has demonstrated that it uh there are thirty-six percent of City of Lakewood is impervious surface. Uh, so we've got uh a number of uh of adjustments to that number. So if you take thirty-six percent out of a hundred percent, you've got sixty-four percent. And you've so you got twenty-six percent of uh of of the City of Lakewood, you're already at fifty percent. If you do those numbers that way, uh as as well, uh they they could have actually easily counted the uh cemeteries, the golf courses, the um uh the rights away for power lines and for um rail lines uh just for starters uh that are not included in those numbers. So uh I have those numbers in raw form. I'd be submitting them to the planning commission for further study and and discussion. So the the these numbers and where they come from, really, in my opinion, uh need to be looked at more closely.
What's on it's on your work plan, it sounds like, on the urban forestry work still this year. So we look forward to having you noodle over that a little bit further with great perspectives and we'll certainly flesh that out as your work plan progresses for the year. We do appreciate it. Any else on the the work plan? Again, we thank you. We know you guys work incredibly hard and put a lot of time and effort into it. It's very much appreciated. I know the public appreciated the chance to speak with you uh during the last few public hearings you've had. So kudos to you for sticking with it and coming up with solid recommendations. So, Ms. Spear, I think you're next and you're welcome to stay here for the discussion, but we're going to walk through part of your work, right, through the comprehensive plan amendments, which is item two, the introduction of the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan amendments with our planning manager, Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good evening. Tiffany Spear, planning division manager. So uh you'll have now, starting on, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but the page.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, you'll have the PowerPoint, but you also have the full memo that precedes this in your packet this evening uh regarding the now a total of twelve comprehensive plan amendments. And I will say right now, I apologize for any confusion with the numbering system because of the way this evolved from last fall to today. Some numbers are in there, some numbers are not in your um actual recommendation coming from the planning commission, but there's a method behind it. And if you really want me to talk about it, I will, but I think it's relatively clear. Um, the background is that you had two resolutions coming through council, one in twenty-four, one in twenty-five, that set up the uh initial set of docket uh items that was considered by the planning commission, starting this, actually, we started right in February of twenty twenty-five with the discussions. But since then, there have been uh additional items added. And so in front of you with the planning commission's resolution, uh twenty twenty-five oh two, you have three additional items that were included beyond what you had requested in your two resolutions. And they are what are now numbered twenty twenty-five twelve, which is talking about allowing new housing in quote existing buildings. And this is something that if we did not, as a city, have this adopted uh regulations in place by June thirtieth of this year, state law would supersede. And then the second two are recommendations uh regarding requested rezones from the parks department, actually. One for Primley Park to rezone the entire park from OSR one to two, and that is uh to reflect the required and actually existing uses in that uh park. And then the second one is Harry Todd Park. It was found that there were some extra zones dropped in it, just the very outer edges of a couple of the streets, the way that the zoning had been um changed over time. There there were some weird leftovers. And so cleaning that up and making sure that the entire park is zoned OSR two. So the background, there were two also that were included in your resolution that came to the planning commission last year, numbered at the time twenty twenty-five oh two and twenty twenty-five oh nine, one of which was regarding the first step to comply with House Bill eleven eighty-one. That's a bill that is focused on climate change and resiliency. It changed the Growth Management Act and then set out some pretty specific and pretty significant changes to local rules and policy that need to be adopted by twenty twenty-nine. And what the city did is uh through the use of commerce grants in this last biennium, able to make the determination that the first step, we've already satisfied. The action taken by council to adopt the twenty twenty-four periodic update to the comprehensive plan and regulations already have satisfied eleven eighty-one for the capital facilities, parks and utilities elements. And so as a result, nothing is needed this year as part of the big uh twenty twenty-five package. So that has been pulled from the resolution in front of you from planning commission. The second one was to prepare for and then suggest any changes that might be needed for the review of the Lakewood's Regional Urban Growth Center that is designated by Puget Sound Regional Council. Uh, this is actually now co-terminus with the downtown subarea plan. And the subarea plan itself is the growth center's plan as well in PSRC's eyes. So we went through an internal process to analyze what is required by that redesignation process for PSRC. And then also did a market study, as they recommend, of what's going on in our downtown and where we see the future taking that part of the city. And with both of those pieces completed, we also are uh come to the conclusion that we don't need to have any additional changes made to the comprehensive plan itself, to the downtown subarea plan, or to every regulations for either one of those. And as a result, that one is also not included in the recommendation from planning commission. So whereas we started with a twenty twenty-five oh two and oh nine, the work was done, but no action is needed by yourselves. And so those are not included in the commission's recommendation. Just a note regarding the Urban Growth Center, that uh paperwork has been submitted to PSRC for redesignating the urgent urban growth center. And our initial feedback from PSRC is that all is looking good and that by having that redesignation, this city will continue to qualify for federal funds that PSRC has funneled through it. Then you have, um, I'm going to skip ahead a couple of slides uh to uh where it lists on the bottom of number four, page four, I should say, of this presentation at least. It starts to list the ones that are included in the planning commission's package to you. So oh one is something that's required for consistently with state law. It's new rules governing co-living housing is what it's called. Um, in the past, the term single residence, single residential occupancy um was a, an SRO was used as terminology for this. It's a slightly updated version to that. Uh, but the City of Lakewood actually partnered through SHAPE with about five other jurisdictions to come up with a model ordinance regarding co-living housing. And so what you will have in front of you for your planning commission, uh your public hearing next Monday night reflects recommendations applicable to Lakewood out of that template work. The second is updating our development regulations to be fully consistent with House Bill eleven ten or middle housing. So this is kind of step two of what you've already adopted this past year with the periodic update. The third is a definitional change based on state law. The fourth is um more additional requirements or restrictions, however you want to define them, regarding the city's authority on residential parking rules. The fifth um actually is two twenty twenty-five oh six, because again, there's no oh two anymore in the package, is talking about a number of things related to civic uses. Uh, the commission brought to you a recommendation that not only said, let's bring the civic use language and regulations that used to be in the code but were accidentally dropped back when the big rewrite happened in twenty nineteen. But there's also some new um suggested amendments regarding religious assembly where that is allowed and where daycares can be operated by religious organizations. And so some of those changes affect the MR one and MR two zones. Oh seven is talking about the adoption of the new twenty twenty-five to twenty-nine commute trip reduction plan. This is something that Lakewood worked with Pierce County and other jurisdictions in partnership to develop. And it has already received preliminary um approval by WashDOT, uh but they are waiting for council action to give their final okay.
Is there a timeline for that, a deadline for the commute trip reduction plan?
That's another June thirtieth of this year. Uh, the next set of amendments is on the next slide. Oh eight is a rezone request that came through from a private op uh property owner over in the air corridor. This is the LRI site where they recently have changed activities to incorporate additional recycling. Uh, and the pre twenty nineteen zoning was a split between air corridor and industrial one. The city zoned it at that point in twenty nineteen completely air corridor because uh that is basically practice within the city to not have split zoned parcels. This is actually the request of that property owner to take it back to the split zoning. And so coming back to what it had been prior to twenty nineteen in any event. And they have committed to making sure that any operations that are conducted on the part that is air corridor will be limited to what is considered safe under the Department of Defense guide guidance for the air corridors. The second um rezone that you see there is number ten, and that is looking at the um parcel that is purchased recently by the city for a downtown park over by Motor Avenue and making sure that that is zoned open space and recreation two. Number eleven is one where there was another um additional, uh, I would say significant discussion at our planning commission level. Uh, the city council requested that the planning commission consider review, change if needed. Um, but take a look at the current zone, which sets a per uh minimum size for accessory dwelling units at a thousand square feet. And what you had, long story short, is that the city staff did a review of fifteen jurisdictions and came back with a recommendation based on those results of a no minimum size for either attached or detached ADUs. Most jurisdictions that we went through, both county and city, do not have a minimum. However, the planning commission felt uh that the four hundred square foot minimum would make sense in the City of Lakewood. So that's what you have in the resolution that came to you. The uh number twelve is another definitional change and allowing um the existing building uh to be used for residential use if it's a uh building with uh commercial or mixed use, but is in a zone that allows multifamily housing. The last rezone or second to last rezone would be Primley Park again, as I mentioned before. And the final rezone is the one for Harry Todd Park. So rather than um basically repeating myself, going through all of these things, what this shows you is a breakdown of each amendment and bullet point form what's included in it. So oh one, new definitions where it's allowed to have co-living housing, the fact that there are operation and development conditions adopted as well. Oh three, again, a number of uh regulatory changes uh related to middle housing. Number four is the update to the definitions in eighteen A ten one eighty. Number five is required by state law and is the residential parking changes. Number six is that larger scope of an amendment that's not only definitions but re uh or resurrecting the civic use zone uh regulations or use resolutions, excuse me, but also the change to allow community centers in the mixed residential one and MF three zones and also allowing daycare centers in existing or new religious assembly structures. Number seven is that commute chip reduction adoption. Number eight, you'll see some maps there for the zoning of that one parcel that is not split now, but they would request it go back to the previous splits. Number 10 is the reason of that parcel over along Motor Avenue. Number 11, again, that idea of the 400 square foot minimum for accessory dwelling units, be they attached or detached. Number 12, allowing the housing in existing buildings in certain zones. And then number 13 is Primley Park getting rezone to OSR two. And number 14 is the fixing of the zone for Harry Todd Park. Where we stand with the process is tonight is a study session, a week from now would be public hearing. And unless the council wants to have more time with this package of amendments, you are scheduled at this point to take action on June 2nd. One note is just that this is an ongoing process. So as soon as 2025's package is done, it'll be time to start 26. And so you'll see the dates and process that'll happen starting in July for the 2026 comprehensive plan amendment package there for reference. And with that, happy to take any questions, Mr. Mayor.
In other words, with 2026 right around the corner, that means the Planning Commission has full employment for another year.
They do, yes.
I'll open up for questions. I'm going to leave this one though, on 2025-12 with allowing housing in existing buildings. There was a lot of public comment about making sure that the Clover Park shops were safe, secure from that kind of development. This particular thing, state law. Is requiring this would allow housing in the existing, if the landlord or the owner decided to, they could have housing.
There are certain criteria, like it's been vacant for so much time and it's in an area that for lack of a better term, tonight is blighted or is. Lacking an active economic driver in, in that little local area of your city. So there is some limitation that can be placed on where this would apply. But in theory, those would be commercial buildings eventually that this might apply to.
Okay. All right, I open up for questions. Let me turn to Councilmember Pearson first and Lynn Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is. You know, the, the state is really trying to find every little obscure kind of corner. That housing could possibly be built in. And it, what it really does unfortunately is it, it may or may not create more affordable housing, but it certainly creates more dangerous housing. And these are not like, you know, structures that you're going to have all these units. Do they have to be under the IRC, you know?
Yes, they do. They, well, let me qualify that. They have to be safe for the parts that are for the dwelling units. The rest of the structure would not need to be changed for the housing to be added into it.
Okay, so, so we, we can require these to not be built under the, the. The residential code and, and they can be, we can require them to be built under the commercial code, like multifamily. Which is would be functioning like if you had four plus units in a commercial space. I mean, that's a commercial. Or are they going to be built to like lower residential standards?
They are going to be built per dwelling unit life safety concerns, be it at a small enough or low enough density to be under the IRC. Or a higher number of units under the IBC International Building Code. And more likely than not, because we're talking about a commercial building to begin with, because of where it would be located. And as you say, the density it would be built at, it would be the IBC requirements. But what I was trying to say is that if you have a building, say it's got four units in a little mini strip mall. And two of them have been empty for a long time, and so that's where this might apply. Those two would have to be improved to be safe for dwelling. The other two sections of that mall would not need to be updated. So you, you would have kind of a piece by piece improvements, if you will.
So I, I assume that this is all, you know, we're kind of being shoved this and we don't. We kind of have to buy off on whatever definitions that they're telling us for these multi-unit residential buildings and the co-living and all of this is kind of.
Most of what you have in front of you in this package for 2025 are state requirements, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I hope that's good for now. Thank you.
I think Mr. Lindholm and then Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify 2025-11, the thinking behind that. Cause that was my thought about the 400 square foot minimum. The idea there, and we don't see this in other jurisdictions, but we see a, a strong push from the state. To allow more and more RVs and park models and temporary type dwellings on a lot. Now, last session, that bill was struck down, but it's going to allow two RVs in a lot. So the hope here was to be forward thinking, make sure a park model, for example, is limited at 399 square feet. So how could we, we be forward thinking and think about distinguishing between a temporary mobile RV coming in next door? And something that's coming in on a poured concrete foundation.
Thank you. Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I agree with. Mr. Pearson, that the state in their effort to solve what they view as a statewide problem is. Putting together lots of different strategies and mandating them. And I, I don't think that they're all safe. I, I, I think that some of them equate to efforts to warehouse people. And that, that things that go on and I'm. I, I think that it is, it is important not to say, well, maybe we can do this. I think that when we implement these state mandates. That we need to do that with some attention to detail about exactly what is, is and, and. What the, what the rules and requirements are going to be in Lakewood to do something like. This, like whether it's to convert a commercial space into living units or, or, or to go on. And I think that to make a change to the comp plan that simply. And I apologize if this is the, not right, but, but, but simply parrots what the state code says. What they, what they wrote in their regulation without taking a look about what, what. How do we, how do we want to add some, some other meat to it to make sure that it. While we can meet the intent in places where it's allowed. That, that we can do it in a way that is going to provide safe housing and things to do that. I mean, we have a rental housing safety program specifically designed to take a, to take a look at that. To, to make sure that we, we tweak in that we have some code. Things that relate to the quality of life of the people that have to live in some of these things to be able to go on. And I, so I think that there are some things to do that. And I guess I would, I would start with, with, with 2025-01, you know, the, the co-living housing. And the, and the, and the, and the, you know, we, we, we've gone through. To do that, but essentially this is saying that, that, that. Any house or structure in a residential zone can be converted to a boarding house. Is really what it is, essentially it is. You can call it whatever it is and, and, and the state set some, some. But the minimum rules that the state set, they, you know, they, they, they said, well, if you, you, what you do is you take this house and you just make. A whole lot of sleeping rooms. And then you've got to have a kitchen of some sort for every 15 rooms. And so we've gone in and we've. We're, 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 we're sort of like the lemmings running towards the cliff. Okay, let's say, okay, go, go and do that. But for instance. This has a kitchen for every 15 rooms or for every floor. Okay. If, if, if you don't do that, but it doesn't say anything about toilets. Or anyways, so, so the state didn't put that kind of a, of, 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 of a. Of, of a standard into, into their regulation. But I think that it is something that we ought to take a look at what makes sense. Okay. In, in other, in other words, are, are we really looking for a. Someone that has 15 or 20 rooms, okay, to, to say, well, but. If they've got a 20 rooms, you've got two kitchens, but one toilet's okay for, for all of those folks. Or should we put something in there that speaks to that, to do that? The, the comp plan draft that's in front of us also doesn't specifically say, and I think it should say that. These co-living sleeping areas. Ought to be subject to the rental housing safety program and, and program to, to, to the standards that are there. And I think that that is something that could be worked into the comp plan. And I understand it says that there, there are, there's a, there's a. There's a statement in here that says that you, you, you know. Cities may not make any standards that are. Different than, 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 than rental things to, to be able to do that. But I think that there is some room to put some safety and things over there. And the state maybe didn't put those in there because they, 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 they regarded this is, this could look very different in a living material. I have to tell you that this co-living model isn't, isn't a new invention that the state came up with. 50 years ago, 50 years ago, when I lived on the south side of Chicago, this was a very common. Sort of a place that people lived, that they, they packed people in. Okay. They tended to be older buildings that someone had acquired and they just. Went inside and adjusted the interior and they just, and they, and, and, and there were landlords that use them as cash cows. You talk about how many people they could put in there to do that. Yeah, if I say, I saw them is that in, in 1994, when I went to Haiti with the United Nations. This is a very common. Organization of housing units in the slums in Port-au-Prince. You know, there's, there's one kitchen and then a whole lot of other little, little rooms out there being able to go and do that. There, the toilet issue was the, the, there were public toilets somewhere within walking distance. And that's, that's, that's how it worked out and, and, and how people would, would go and do that. And to be really honest, when I was going to college, I and six other guys. Found an old house and we moved into it and we co-lived, co-lived into it, sharing, sharing expenses. We didn't do that at, at rental, but it goes off over there and. After a while, we wore on each other. So it didn't go on. So I, so I think that there is some, some, some meat that can be put on this. Amendment that takes particularly, I wouldn't. The two that I would think are most important is to deal something with this sanitation level. About being able to go and do that because it doesn't sound like that there's even a requirement for running water in, in these individual rooms. Okay, you know, so that they wouldn't, they wouldn't even have a, necessarily have to have a sink. Okay. But we could make some kind of, I, I, I think, I think that's to designate that this kind of housing is subject to. Adhering to and, 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 and the inspection process with the rental housing inspection is something that we can do. And I don't see that as, 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 as. Insignificant, is, is inconsistent with what we do for a single family house that's going to be rented. Okay. You know, and it's looking to go and be able to do that. So, so, so I guess maybe my question for Ms. Spear is, is, is how do we go about adding some nuances? Of that sort in here or exploring the ability to do that so that we do it upfront?
There's the, the process that could be handled internally by your staff to bring information back to you. Whether we can do that for next Monday night as a public hearing is a separate question. But we can certainly go back and verify what is required in the state law, what's not allowed under the state laws explicitly. And then figure out how and where additional criteria can be added to this type of housing under what's required with 2025-01.
Okay, and, and then I just had a question because I'm, 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 when I'm looking at is at. At page 40 and 41 of our patent. And there it has tables that are essentially the. Residential land use tables, you know, with the zoning classifications and things, things that are there. And this particular thing resulted in a, a change in the table, essentially adding a line for, for co-living housing. But the, the, the table and the tables look identical, but the. They, they just apparently appear in two different places in our code. But that, the, the co-living housing. Line on, on the table on page 40. Differs from the co-living housing line on, in the table on page 41. In, in that, on page 41, it shows that they're permitted uses in NC1 and NC2. And on page 40, it shows that they're not allowed in NC1 and NC2. And I'm. And maybe I don't understand the nuance between the two tables.
Well, I, I think what you've just pointed out is a scrivener's error, Councilmember Brandstetter. But what you now have in the code as of last year with the periodic review is a summary table at the very beginning. That combines a number of different types of uses all into one table for ease of reference. But then you have in following sections of that code chapter, the broken out by residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. So you now have two tables to be amended when we start to go through this process each year. And so this should have been the same, and I think you just identified an issue that we'll correct by next week.
Oh, okay. Is, is it? Do you, do you know which way it needs to be corrected?
Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
So they've come back consistently to be able to.
We need to move it along a little bit, Mr. Brandstetter, because natives are getting restless on the council here. So unless you have any other comments on 2025-01. I'm going to move to Mr. Boki real quick. Do you have a question on that?
I, I will make two comments. One. I don't know that we can put all those restrictions in. I don't know that the proper vehicle is the comp plan because that's not really what it's there for. But we do have the rental safety program and we do have. What affectionately called, we passed a number of years ago, the FLOP house ordinance. But now the state legislature wants us to, to encourage. And it's been sitting there for years and I don't know that we've ever even had to use it because remember it came up because we had one over in the air corridor that we couldn't even inspect. So there are, there are vehicles. I don't think that the comp plan is the right. My guess is the comp plan is not the right vehicle. We need those two other vehicles.
So unless there are any other comments on 2025-01. It is a study session, so this is the purpose of going through these. This is the overview we get before the hearing and then they come back before. So it's fair game to have some commentary. Any other comments on 2025-01? I'll just put in my two cents worth on, on co-housing, co-living housing. We all want to be safe housing. And I know you've had some experiences. Let me tell you what I think that this goes toward. Student housing is an issue of need throughout the community. I am personally aware of a co-housing arrangement for my middle daughter who went to Oregon State. My youngest daughter is going to Boise State and they have exactly this. I can tell you it's not ramshackle. It is about $1,100 per unit, so $4,400 for four kids. In one of these units and they are beautiful. They have independent, have their own room, their own bathroom, their own shower. And they share this kitchen and living room area that's granite and upscale appliances. So it is not ramshackle co-housing. Now, can we guarantee that that's the kind of quality product we get with this ordinance? Maybe not. But I think this is kind of what some of these arrangements are speaking to. I know that when I talked to the chancellor of Pierce College and the folks at Bates Technical College. There's always a demand for better and more student housing. This may be one of those opportunities for that, I just put it out there. And it's very costly. Those of you who have been parents of kids, it's not cheap. Okay, anything on twenty twenty-five oh two? What I think I'm going to try to do is go orderly in that manner so we can work through this methodically and not be here till midnight. So any comments, questions of Ms. Spear on twenty twenty-five oh two?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, it would be oh three because oh two was pulled.
Yep, 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 thank you. Twenty twenty-five oh three, that's just updates with regard to middle housing that was already part of the House Bill eleven-ten. Okay. The next one, because I don't have my glasses on, what do you know? Next one is four, twenty twenty-five oh four.
Correct.
Any questions, comments on that? Page forty, okay, the deputy mayor is orienting me again because I'm scrolling too fast. Okay, how about the next one? Oh five, any comments on oh five? Yeah, the next one. Oh six. Anything on oh six? Go into the next one. Oh eight. We did oh seven. Oh eight is just, yeah, that's pretty standard stuff there, nothing there, anything? Oh eight is a redesignation of split zone parcels. That seems pretty self-explanatory. Mr. Branstadter on oh eight?
Yes, it, it seemed that there were adjacent to the parcel involved in this. It looked like there were three or four other parcels that are all just adjacent or at least along that side of the clear zone. I understand that the, the others didn't ask. But you know, the reason why this particular parcel no longer has split zoning had to do with when we did something with all those parcels.
Correct, in twenty nineteen.
And so why not make this correction to all of them?
Because as best practice in city action, not only for Lakewood, but other jurisdictions as well, to avoid split zoning on parcels. And so this is coming from the private property owner asking you to do something that's not, but quote, "normal" for how city handles zoning. So we would not, as a department, recommend to you that others go back to a split zoning situation, especially since they didn't come to the council and ask for it.
So if this is not a best practice, why are we recommending doing it even if the property owner wants to?
The property owner is wanting to do this because they're working with the Department of Health and recycling facilities on that site, which are unique to that parcel. There's things that can't be done anywhere else in the county. And so this was something that was brought to council last fall. And then the, the people that were proponents to this amendment came to planning commission as well to explain the situation. It's somewhat unique.
So is it, is the definition of an essential public facility?
I'm not sure what their underlying use is. The recycling facility, possibly, I would have to go back and look at how the city defines because it has its own list of essential public facilities in addition to what's in state law. I can come back with that.
Okay, okay, I, I guess, you know, and, and as long, and, and it, I, I just, I just think that if, 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 if the next property owner in, in that line next year comes and asks us for it, you know, I'm, I'm not quite sure that we, what I see today, that, that we have a reason to say no to the next person to be able to, 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 to go, go and do that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, seen, anything else on ten? Okay, then we're, excuse me, we are at ten, which is the rezonement of the new urban park property. I would hope there's no comment on that, right? Just checking. Twenty twenty-five dash ten, all right. Yeah, let's go to eleven, anything on eleven? Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you, Mr. Liddholm, for explaining commission's reasoning on a four hundred square foot minimum. I wonder if there are better ways to address RVs than this because this appears to me to also limit potential for tiny homes that people could build as an ADU or a mother-in-law unit type thing, which I don't know that we necessarily want to prevent from happening so that we have those sort of options. Have we looked at other ways to sort of circumvent having RVs as living space in the city?
Well, and Mr. Remack can speak to this more about, you know, there's limitations of building code will prevent certain things from happening. My thinking on this was, again, not knowing what the code's going to look like in three, four, five, ten years and seeing the direction of things. My hope is to make sure that we're legislating on what's going to happen tomorrow too and distinguishing between different housing types. And to me, a park model is a very different housing type than a Port Foundation ADU.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Mr. Branstadter on twenty twenty-five eleven?
Yes, in, in the, in the discussion on twenty twenty-five eleven and, and, and the background paragraph, it says, "A reduction in the ADU minimum size would open ADU design and size options up to property owners looking not only at stick-built ADUs, but also modular or shipping container-based units." Now, I don't have a problem with someone doing an ADU with a modular manufactured unit or my vision of a shipping container-based ADU is, 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 is a metal conics thing over there. And is there a way that we can shape this so that that's not an acceptable construction for an ADU?
Well, Councilmember Branstadter, that is simply as an example to say those are different types of building construction that is now out there. And the way containers can now be used where they're not just plopped down a piece of property as is, they are significantly remodeled, they're combined with other types of building materials. But it's a starting frame that's used for the housing unit. But it may not be four hundred square feet, it may be a smaller size. So that was not intended to suggest that this is what something that would be out loud, allowed in code, just use a, a container that way. It's just to suggest that there are other things besides stick-built units that people would be interested in using as an ADU.
So for, for, for those sorts of modular units, if someone wanted to, to do one even going off of there, does the building code actually have things that we can address that we can expect on there to be a, a permit to, to, to do that? And, and I, maybe I'm reading that, so I'm reading that in the material that's provided to me. But is that a reference to modular-based units going to actually appear in writing in the comp plan if we approve this?
The, the intent when we look, excuse me, the intent when we looked at it really is with the IBC or the IRC. They both have regulations regarding what the minimum design standards will be. For a single-family residence, even for a small ADU, it's a minimum seven-foot wall length that must exist for any facility to be qualified as a habitable room. So at a minimum, if you wanted to get the smallest, the IRC would restrict you to seven by seven. But then you can't be seven by seven because you also have to have wash facilities as well as cooking facilities when it comes to an ADU. So when you're looking at it, yes, you could get small, but you're probably not going to get much smaller than two hundred square feet without really pushing something in because there's also setbacks for all sorts of things when you build it. Your toilet's got to be fifteen inches off the wall, it's got to be this far from the shower, it's got to be all these various caveats that come in that usually keep a tiny house down to like two hundred square feet is about as small as you really ever see them come in. Speaking to like shipping containers, they would be a one-off. So if you looked at one, they are consistently remodeled. They're also not built through the IRC or the IBC, so they're a fully engineered structure when they come in. People typically go ahead and redesign them. I do not believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the new ADU, I don't think we have the ability to require them to look like anything else anymore. That is one of the restrictions that was taken away, existed in some other jurisdictions. But you can't make them all look the same anymore. You can't require it to look like something. But at the same time, they're not really something that you're seeing out in the, the business and the industry, that they're just leaving it as a shipping container. You don't get water runoff, they have to add a roof system structure to it, they have to add guttum structure to it, things of that nature. So it really gets converted. The most I've ever seen and one that was actually exposed was it was a roof that was over it and then it had aesthetic siding on it when you looked at it. There are restrictions in the building code that will limit how wild you can really get though when it comes to an ADU.
So it, it just seems to me that back ten years ago that we had a code enforcement action in the city of some people who were living, perhaps squatting or, 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 or there was somebody that was renting out shipping containers to homeless people as a place to live and we had to take some action to preclude that. And I just don't want to put something that, that implies that that's something that we want to encourage or that we don't have any way of controlling in, in, in terms of.
The building, the building permit will control that. The IRC restricts what they can do. It does require heating, glazing, safety requirements, egress requirements. No one will be able to use a shipping container without serious modification as a small, tiny home. It's not possible. We would go out for code compliance and say it's not habitable space.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Mr. Boki had a question there.
So I, I do want to dovetail onto those and then both your remarks. So, yeah, on, on page one fifteen, I'm looking here, fifteen local governments ADU, eleven of the fifteen have no minimum ADU size. The staff recommended no ADU minimum side, size. But then when I listen to Mr. Remack, it says, "One city relies on state building code requirements for minimum size." So is that the best way to write it or is it best to say no minimum size if that's where we want to go with this thing?
Well, where that one jurisdiction went was, building code requirements would be the same as saying IRC or IBC and what is required to qualify as a dwelling would still control. So you don't necessarily have a square footage minimum, but you do have those codes apply. And that is where the recommendation was from the department to the planning commission was to do that.
So essentially, it's a, what is it, a delineation without a difference? They're saying we relied on code, but that's really a given. They have, everyone has to rely on code.
They should have a recognition in their codes, however they're written. And these, this is summarizing, this isn't verbatim from all of the various codes. But they should all recognize health and safety requirements in the building codes, yes.
So what was the city? I'll just get a summary, I, I think that you have the summary in there.
The rec, yeah, the.
Yeah, don't, never mind. I just wanted to understand that, that difference where they say state building code. And that makes it sound like everyone else isn't following state building. In fact, everyone.
They are, it's just worded in a different way.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great, we'll turn to the last one, twenty twenty-five dash twelve. I think we discussed this in some length already. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a, Ms. Spear, can you help walk me through? So someone has a large garage in their backyard in an R-one or an R-two zone that's been, they have a C of O for at least three years. And how many units can they put inside? Can they, does that, does that qualify in here as a, as an existing building?
No, this is existing buildings that are zoned for commercial use in a zone that does allow residential units. So again, it would, it would not be somebody's backyard garage. It would be the corner store that's been empty for ten years and is, again, kind of a blight on the area. That is one that might be qualified to, to use this, this code change.
Or any of our, you know, the, what was it, the the big lot building?
Sure.
Would that, I could put a whole bunch of units in there?
Provided that whatever zone that that is in, and I'd have to go back and look if they're part of the central business district zone or a different one. If they allow housing in the zone where it's located, then that answer would be yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any else on Ellen, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, well, that concludes then the review. Unless I'm missing something, Ms. Spear, but that concludes all of the.
There were just the two other park rezon request, but that was it.
Yeah, those I don't think we had much discussion or concern about. Unless there's any other comment on those.
Not for me, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that and thanks again to the planning commission for their work on that and bringing those forward to us. We'll now turn to the review of the multifamily tax exemption program and the RTA map. In addition to amendments for this, we have Ms. Becky Newton. And, and councilmembers, just in recognition of the time of day, it's eight-thirty. I think we've talked about this at some length, so when we get to the point of discussion, let's try to keep our comments concise, if we can, please. Mr. Remack?
Good evening. The summary you'll see in front of you is the staff memo coming from the result of meeting with both the planning commission. We're going to kind of walk through it really quickly, speak to what the planning commission recommended, as well as to where staff is still at. Executive summary in twenty twenty-four, City of Lakewood asked that we go ahead and look at the RTA. The intent was to be able to improve clarity of when the MFT can be utilized, as well as increase participation and improve the effectiveness. To that effect, we went ahead and took a look at a few things that we were looking at. One was the expansion of the RTA and that was the primary that we started out with. We went ahead and met with the planning commission. They've met quite a few times on it, as we've already spoken to, two times in both study session, four times when it comes to public hearing. And at the last one, they took action and had some recommendations, which we'll speak to today. Right? First item we're looking at is proposed, a men, proposed amendments to the twelve-year extension allowance for the MFT. Currently, when we look at it, the amendment allows for LMC three-point-six-four-oh-two-oh-G already allows for a twelve-year extension in the MFT for both the Springbrook Station District, Springbrook and the Station District. The RT extension is not allowed currently in the CBD. Right, so when we're looking at it, what the extension we came out with was to allow that extension to be included with the CBD, that would equalize it across all of the jurisdictions in which we allow the MFT to be utilized. The analysis when we looked at it is that the twelve-year extension of the CBD would align all the RTAs, making it easier to go ahead and incentivize people to recognize if the MFT is allowed, and it's allowed in that zone as well for the extension. And then the additional years also go ahead and add some insurance incentive when people look at it. If it's a more expensive program, what they're looking at or extensive build, they go ahead and get some of that tax relief that continues on. In the end, when we really came down to it, the staff recommendation really sees it as kind of neutral. It's more of a policy as to how far we want to go to incentivize MFT growth within City of Lakewood. Planning commission recommendation, when they looked at it, was actually feeling that maybe that extension was too long to remove the twelve-year extension from all the zones. So that was number one. Item number two was an MFT application procedure language cleanup.
Yeah, let's discuss that first one, Mr. Branstad, and then Mr. Pearson, another question, I think.
Yeah, the, you know, this idea of a twelve-year extension of what was originally some number of years of, of a program is I, I know it kind of run counters to what the whole idea of the multifamily tax exemption is. It's recognized that it's a, an economic development. And it's, it's, it's designed to be able to get things built.
Yeah.
To incentivize getting things built. After it's been there for eight or ten years or whatever, that the extension has nothing to do and no impact on the incentivizing of getting it originally. Into that, the extension has nothing to do and no impact on the incentivizing of getting it originally built. And in fact, of the. Multi-family tax exemptions that we as a city have approved. Here to form. Um, you know, you know, um. A significant number of them have changed hands and have and have been sold. So uh, I don't think that uh, that that it serves the role of incentivizing to get things built. Or to get things built sooner. So I am I am aligned more with the planning commission's recommendation that we. While we keep the multi-family tax exemption program within the city, that we eliminate the. The twelve-year extension of the original multi-family tax exemptions. I think that's uh more in line of what the tool is for.
One, Mr. Pearson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just quickly, I I would, I would echo that. I I think that the goal and the idea is to get these, you know, get the units and get them in. And once they're in and they have their, their um, you know, their benefit from the tax incentive, then get them back into the. The paying system, so.
One, one item when we're looking at it for the second twelve-year extension is that it does require twenty percent of affordable, seventy percent of the AMI. Is a requirement to get the twelve-year extension. It also does require at the end of that twelve-year extension that anyone who is in that AMI or getting the affordable housing. Has to be given one month's worth of rent by the owner for transition to another facility if they need to move. So there are additional caveats that come with it.
Very good. Any other comments on that? And kind of also the belief that a tax incentive should not be a tax subsidy for the duration of the useful life of the building, but that's my humble opinion. Um, next one is number two.
Okay, number two is the MFT application procedure, and it's some language cleanup. The timing surrounding when an application for the MFT was to be filed and when agreements are to be executed in the current code is a little ambiguous. When people have gone to execute their agreements, there's been some holdups as to not being sure when they could actually apply for the MFT program. The proposed amendments actually go to clarify that. The language would actually clarify to read. The application shall be filed after land use permitting is complete or prior to building permit issuance if no land use action is required. Conditional agreements shall say, shall be fully executed prior to issuance of building final certificate occupancy. Just gives it a very clean effort, whether if there is or is not land use when you can apply.
Makes immense sense.
Thank you.
Yeah, number three.
The number three is the expansion of the residential target area. Planning Public Works reviewed the Oak Brook, Springbrook, Lakewood Station and the Central Business District and the Tillicum neighborhoods for possible extensions of the RTA. That's also what we brought forward to the planning commission when we looked at it. The area zones, density allowance, current use, neighborhood protections and conformist comprehensive plan goals were all looked at with selecting and making a recommendation on the RTA expansion. The study resulted in the CBD being the area best placed to expand the RTA per staff recommendation. Staff is saying that. Here's the analysis behind that. The analysis, the area shows the CBD is the appropriate location based on. The purpose of the MFT is to stimulate construction of new multifamily housing in urban centers. Currently, the CBD's housing stock is below the targeted rates, so we need more housing inside the CBD. The CBD zone is an area designated in the comprehensive plan and the downtown subarea plan to welcome a significant share of the increased both employment as well as housing. And it helps prevent single-family resident zones as well from being increased intensification throughout the city. We have a goal that we have to hit that comes up in terms of our population and our employment. We need to choose where we place that, looking at the CBD and how it was designed. We're looking at that. The subarea code also goes ahead and regulates the buffer transition area between the higher intensity use of the downtown subarea and the surrounding residences. That doesn't exist in other jurisdictions and other sections when we look at it. Sorry, not other jurisdictions, but other zones. So when it been in the CBD, it goes and gets and gives us control over building height, uh, building setbacks. Parking and loading, refuse container location and coverage as well as mechanical equipment. These protections do not exist outside of the CBD for any of the surrounding residential areas. Someone puts a multifamily residence in, multifamily building in, in another location, you will not have those protections like you would in the CBD. Pierce Transit Transfer Facility is also located in the subarea, supporting multimodal transportation. As well as some of the new restrictions with reductions in parking that came from the legislature. It decreases the overall carbon footprint as we don't have to require as much parking that comes in for that. The existing zoning classification and land use regulations anticipate and require higher density inside of the CBD. For middle housing and the multifamily housing. The twenty eighteen environmental impact study that was performed was reaffirmed again when we looked in twenty twenty-four. It already took into account to the population increase that was to happen and occur in the CBD, so it can support it. Increased housing is required to maintain the CBD's regional urban growth center designation. Since two thousand and ten, we've received seventeen million dollars from PSRC in infrastructure improvements based on that center designation. To maintain a center designation, you do need a set number of activity units, and that is where the drive is supposed to be pushed for your growth, both employment as well as housing. The downtown subarea and its regulations include incentives for new affordable and denser housing. So you actually can get density bonuses for doing affordable housing inside of the CBD. That is not something that exists in the other zones that we have throughout the city. And it aligns the boundaries of the CBD RTA with the CBD zone itself, again, making it easy. If you're within the zone, then you know that you're able to use the RTA. The other neighborhoods that we looked at did not afford protective transition zones for surrounding neighborhoods. Support the comprehensive plan goals. Provide control over design standards, support methodologies to establish a downtown park. Support or maintaining the regional urban growth center designation for traffic funding. Provide ready multimodal transportation options, reducing greenhouse emissions. Staff recommendations is to approve the expansion of the CBD RTA. The planning commission recommendation is to approve the CBD RTA expansion in the west of Gravely Lake Drive Southwest. South of Lake Grove Street Southwest and north of one hundred Street Southwest only. That's the blip that Ms. Tabo was speaking to earlier. And then approve the Springbrook RTA expansion and then approve new RTAs in Oak Brook and Tillicum.
So just to clarify, if we can pull up the map at the right pages, so we're all in the same pink zone, uh, to be clear. Do we have that? Let's just turn to the page so we know where we're talking. I think I think we looked at it, but I just want to be clear for the public's benefit, one twenty-three. Okay, so on page one twenty-three of the packet, the proposed expansion area as recommended by the planning commission in twenty-three. Appears to be those parcels uh to the south of Gravely Lake, right? Between Lake Grove and a hundred. Okay. And then page one thirty-two. And then one thirty-two has the the full extension as proposed, I believe, by staff. It's all right? Okay. That's all the way down to the end of the CBD. Which is the area that we've received a lot of comments on. Mr. Remac, one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Understand the requirements uh before us to make sure we maintain our urban growth center. But the absence of the application of an MFT. Throughout the entirety of the CBD doesn't necessarily mean we would lose our designation, right?
No, it does not.
It's just a matter of having plans for growth that we have.
Yeah, the the reality when we look at the reality with the MFT, it's an option to incentivize growth.
Right.
It's a tool.
Okay. Any questions on the little pink versus the big pink, just to be clear? So we're all in the pink, Mr. Brandsider.
Well, I would just say that um, there's a difference between the little pink and the big pink. And one of the differences. The nature of the streetscape. On those two areas. The little thing that has been changes is a. Almost no streetscape at all. Uh, it it's uh, it 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 is essential that's there. It's got some spaces that are vacant, that there's some space behind it. But it 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 it's, it's something that's there and that. What's there isn't a significantly appreciated streetscape by by the community. When you get to the further south, okay, in the in the area that was. Uh, the additional area that's in the large pink, if you will, that uh. That actually is an area that actually has. An attractive existing streetscape for much of it. To be able to go and do that and and which is there. And so I'm in favor of the planning commission's recommendation for this RTA. Of of the adding those small paint things there from north of a hundred street. But not adding the ones that are that 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 are further to the south. Okay, uh, I I I would note that the central business district. The vast majority of it is already. Um, in an RTA and is there that if we can. And we have talked about how impatient we are about. Not having momentum of building and 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 development in the in this, in in the sub, based on the subarea plan. But we've also talked about that once we get like one significant project done. That then that will set the stage and the example for others to be done in the areas that we already have identified. And incentivized. And quite I am hoping that the two years from now, the the a successful alliance project. Is going to demonstrate the uh, ability to do that in the areas that are already in the R R RTA in the downtown. Cause there are, there's buildable land. Or land that is for sale in there that is of the size to be able to make some significant things to do that. We just need the example. And it's it's somewhat like. We have to have the same patience we had in Woodbrook in creating that industrial park. That took us, we did things, and then for years, it seemed like nothing was happening uh going on. And then when we first got, you know, the 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 moving company built the one, the first one over there, then then down over there. Then and then and then another one, and then suddenly it became. Uh, the the existing projects became a catalyst for nearby, and I think that will eventually happen. Particularly within the twenty-year life plan of this subarea plan, which is still only in its seventh year. To be able to go and do that. So I think the um. Going with the planning commission's recommendation for this RTA makes sense to me.
Very good. Mr. Boki.
I'm just gonna cover all three of them. So um. On the first one about the twelve-year extension. I'm okay with leaving the language in as it sits, which is. Uh, Springbrook and the Station District, but I'm not gonna die on that hill. I mean, if that's something everybody wants to get rid of, fine, but I'm o- I'm okay. It's been in there, and I think for purposes of of consistency and people who who maybe have, are in there and who have. Who have applied for that, and I don't know that anybody has, um, that that should be left in there. And not not cut them off at the knees. Um, I would, number two, I would just approve it as is, approve the language. Um, I think on number three, I'm I'm with. Well. Um. I would do planning commission recommendation number one, which is that west of Gravely Lake, the the small little thing. I would not do Springbrook and I would not do Oak Brook and Tillicum. Um, for a variety of reasons, but I think best stated by the the staff that. Our comp plan doesn't, right now, it just is not in sync with that. And this is, that would be, it's kind of an attempted workaround the comp plan. So the, but the comp plan leads on that, so that's the governing document. And the comp plan doesn't call for urban villages in those areas and whatnot. And there's some other issues too. I mean, we talk about saving businesses along Gravely Lake Drive. Well, both these, including Tillicum, are much more robust business corridors than the. And then the Gravely Lake Drive corridor. And the Tillicum corridor already has thousands of of um. Of apartment units, which might be one of the reasons why it's a more vibrant business core, uh, business area than um. Than the Gravely Lake corridor. But um, I think that a lot more thought needs to be put in that, and that comes from the comp plan down rather than from this way up into the comp plan. So I I think staff did a good job of enunciating that. So the only thing I would uh approve there is uh number one.
Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I agree with the the not not including the Oak Brook or the Tillicum um RTAs. Uh, there are the MFT areas for those. I do think that when you kind of look at how. City zoning and and things are set up and and you kind of gradually move from a, you know, R R one, R two, R three. You know, multifamily and so things like that. I think that by kind of by not including um the area to the west of Gravely Lake as it goes down to a hundred and twelfth. You're you're almost incentivizing by not, by not including that air. The the MFT in that area, you're almost incentivizing commercial development where. You know, because those areas aren't being, you know, incentivized the same the same way that the rest of the the CBD is. So I think to to stay uniform with the CBD, I I would just be, you know, recommending. Having those areas totally overlap and and being consistent that way. I I I don't think that um. I don't, I don't, I don't see, you know, the real driver for not including it. It it, the the multifamily commerce, all that stuff's already allowed there. So you're not, you know. It's not like anything is changing. You're just including the whole area as an incentive to, you know, we've targeted this whole area. As the central business district to get, you know, our our higher density in. And I don't know why we'd be removing bits and pieces of it just because, you know. There's a buffer, uh. There's, there's other development and there's, there could be multifamily, there could be commercial, there could be a car wash, there could be all kinds of things that are built in there. Um, and I think that the natural flow of housing is from less dense to more dense to commercial to to those. So I I think that if you, if you do get some some multifamily in there, then that's kind of more along the natural flow of um. Of development and and how, you know, zoning should 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 take place. So I would be recommending including the whole thing. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I. I'll kind of go off what Mr. Mr. Boki said as well, and largely I agree with what what he had to say. Um, as we talk about the twelve-year MFT extension, the big consideration for me is that. To qualify for that, there has to be a portion of affordable housing, right? Uh, to qualify for that initial twelve years and then conceivably for the extension. Maybe we could be more restrictive on the extension and raising that to thirty percent or thirty-five percent has to be affordable housing. But I think that that's an important thing to keep in mind is as we're incentivizing, making sure we're doing it for the right reasons and making housing available for everybody. So something to consider on that aspect. Uh, when it comes to the RTA, uh, I agree with the planning commission's portion of the central business district for just that section between Lake Grove and a hundredth street. Um, that makes sense to me. The the lower portion along a hundred and twelfth for all the reasons we've talked about before and folks who've come in not wanting to. Disrupt the neighborhood feel down there or displace uh folks who are who are doing that. Um, not that we would necessarily dis. uh, folks who are, who are doing that. Um, not that we would necessarily displace folks, but maintaining our, our focus on where we want folks to apply for the MFT to that central business district, I think is critical. Um, likewise, I, I would not be in favor of expanding it to Oak Brook or Tillicum, uh, because I think that dilutes our focus of where we want to incentivize building. I think that was all three of them. Thank you.
Any other council member with comments on these? Did you have anything else on that particular one, Mr. Emick?
Nope. Just when looking at it, the recommendation really is if we're looking at an expansion, then it's the CBD. But it is completely councilmatic as to whether you want to do an extension or not.
This comes, uh, back to this body of republic hearing on the 19th of June or May, right? Correct?
Yes, sir.
And then actually after that. Okay, very good. Um, yes, sir.
I, 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 I just, um, you know, and I am okay with not using Silicon or, 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 or Oak Brook to do that. The, in, in, in Spring Brook, I have a different issue. I don't necessarily have a problem with the recommended parcels that would be added to it. That, um, my concern about the Spring Brook RTA is when we did it and we, and we shaped it kind of as a butterfly was up, opposing corners of San Francisco and, and, and Bridgeport is going on. And we, we did that quite some time ago. That most recently, last year, the city council in the comprehensive plan amendments adopted a policy that we are going to attempt and make efforts to retain existing manufactured home parks. Because we've come to realize more recently than the RTA has existed that manufactured home parks are particularly affordable homeownership options in the city. You know, we, we have some mobile home parks where residents are seeking to buy the park to be able to go and do that. But by and large, you know, given the high cost of buying a, buying a home, um, that they are in that most affordable things to do that. And the mobile home parks are actually quite dense. You get, you get pretty good density. So, um, my concern is that with, that, that, that is the one RTA that has a sizable mobile home park within it. And when we put something in there, we're, while, while we're saying that there's certain kinds of development that are allowed and that's a difference from zoning to being an RTA, it's that, that, that we're going to incentivize replacing what's there with uh, something else, I think is inconsistent with the change we made last year to the comp plan that specifically said, we want to work to maintain the existing manufactured home parks in the city. So, you know, I, I, that's neither the planning commission's recommendation or the staff's, but it's a, it is a tweak that seems to me to be grounded in consistency wi- within the comp plan about why is that one mobile home park in all the mobile home parks in the city being cited in an RTA with an MFT, uh, incentive? Um, okay. I don't know whether we're going to get any comments or, 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 uh, I'm kind of interested in the, the comments that we get from all four neighborhoods that are involved next week.
Yeah. Very good. Well, thank you. So next we'll review the six year transportation improvement program, which is on page 157 of the packet.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Counsel?
Rod Winsky, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, as you, as you stated, the program itself is on page 157, but I'm going to delve into the slideshow presentation that we have starting on page 174 of your packet. So this, this program proposes to remove four program, projects that we have had under construction or going under construction within the next week here shortly, or two weeks, I guess we're out from bid for two of these. Uh, and then add four projects as well. And then I'll kind of go through your pavement real quick. I know you got other things going on. So the four projects to be removed, Silicon Boulevard, excuse me, the South Tacoma Way overlay from 96 to, uh, Silicon Boulevard. The Nyanza Road sidewalk, which that, uh, project is under advertisement currently will come to you here on the second of June for award. Glad we get a good bid. The 92nd and South Tacoma Way traffic signal and the interlock and drive sidewalk. Again, that's currently under advertisement. Uh, projects proposed to be advert, or added, uh, we're looking at an overlay on Pacific Highway from the railway bridge to 108th. A, the segment of sidewalk on Gravely Lake Drive from PAC Highway to Nyanza, that little sliver there that was not added before that we need right of way for. Uh, the Nyanza Park Drive, Nyanza Road to Clover Creek Drive project, and then another overlay on 96 between South Tacoma Way and the eastern city limit. And I delve in through this a little bit. You can kind of see the stretch of Pacific Highway from the railway bridge to 108th. That was paved last in, resurfaced last in 2005 as part of the sidewalk project that the city had there. Uh, the little segment of sidewalk there, you can kind of clearly see is missing on the west side of Gravely. Uh, this is a $750,000 project or there. So about 650,000 of the 750 is for purchase of right of way. So it's really
We've been talking
This is the gap you've been talking about. So really this is a right of way purchase project, more so than a construction and design project. Uh, Nyanza Park Drive, Nyanza Road to Clover Creek Drive. As you can see in this photo, it's, it's kind of congested with some trees. So we may be coming to you, uh, with some, you know, alternative design concepts on this. Whether that means we just put a shared use path on one side of the road versus putting your traditional curb gutter sidewalk on both sides of the road, uh, to kind of save some oak trees that you've got out there. There's really no way to dodge sidewalk around some of this stuff. Again, something to look, look at in the future. And lastly, the segment of 96 between South Tacoma Way and the eastern city limit, which is really I five out there. Uh, we put two overlays on this as we're, you know, starting to look at grants coming up in the next cycle and uncertain what the criteria is. We want to kind of broaden our horizons on that. The PCI is currently, I know that says 76. Your PCI is actually 74. It's down just a little bit as it's starting to recede. We're going to get some uh, refreshers on that PCI with some, either some interns or a, we've been going through a vendor to do that next year. Uh, to get us a little better idea of where it is, but I, it's pretty close. Um, you'll see some average cities around there. Lakewood really is average to kind of a little bit above average, considering Tacoma and Seattle kind of bring that down a little bit. Uh, across functional classes and roadways, most of your roadways are in good shape. There's just a call, a couple of small areas that are bringing your PCIs down, which is no different than it's been throughout the last couple of years, a couple of bad roads here and there. Um, for the bulk majority of it, it's in pretty good shape or very good shape. And here's a map of what you have for your 26 to 31, although I'm interested in hearing any questions or comments you may have on this.
It's hard for me to see the blue real quick is what on the legend there?
The blue is remove, the projects currently under construction are about to be under construction.
And Mr. Laura Sella has a question as I'm squinting screen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about, uh, the neighborhood where my, my parents are at. No, uh, Nyanza Park Drive, uh, Nyanza Road to Clover Creek. Uh, you mentioned potential for non-traditional, non-motorized improvements. Would that be like an asphalt trail like we've seen in other places?
Something like that.
Something wide enough for strollers and
Yep. Strollers, 10 feet wide for strollers and bikes on one side.
And working around the existing oak trees over there. Alright, thank you.
True, Bob.
Question, same area. Uh, you mentioned that the, uh, section of Nyanza and Clover at 750,000, uh, right away. Uh, here. No right of way issues here?
No, the right of way for Nyanza Park Drive is 60 feet wide. And so you don't have right of way problems. You got to kind of treat other problems.
You should go around, way around the trees and do kind of a curvy
Yeah.
Walkway within the right of way. Might be attractive.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that'll be next. Mr. Laura Sella?
Uh, one last thing on this. I know the, uh, the railroad crossing near Pacific Highway at the end of Clover Creek Drive kind of intersects with that. Uh, that's still on the plans for a sound transit upgrade to make that passable for folks. Cause as it is now, you can't get a stroller across the tracks.
Yeah, the great questions. Yes, that is planned for the city's improvement in 2028 after sound transit makes their improvements. So when sound transit is making the improvements in the railway, the city is going to come through immediately thereafter and finish that up.
Thank you.
Are you foreshadowing? Are you talking about strollers for us or? Just checking. Alright. Mr. Brad Seder, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I don't really have any questions about the added projects to do that, but I had a question about two projects that are being retained in the plan. Um, and one is, uh, it's the downtown plan, Green Street Loop. Uh, it's, it's on page nine of the packet. It's 302 dash 0146. And, um, I thought we had received a grant to begin the design work of that.
Yes, we, we have a feasibility study, a 1.1 million dollar raise feasibility study that we are just about ready to award a consultant contract to. Interviews are coming up in the next week or two, uh, for that.
And the reason that I'm asking for that is that over in the funding columns, it's still showing all zeros, like we have no money to put towards that project. And it would seem that there is something in 2026 that is going to go towards design, even if we don't have the money to fully complete the, you know, the, the whole thing. Um, so it's just, I was just looking for a number there that indicated that that, that's going to begin to move.
It, it, it will and it won't. So the feasibility study will roughly give us an idea of what we're going to build. It won't give us any, I mean, it'll give us basically 30% design, which really doesn't get us very far in the design. So the idea behind the feasibility study is it gives you guys an options, the options of what you're going to want to build and breaks it out into projects from there. At which point we start to go actually after the design money to move the design along. That's the 25 point, whatever million is in that, in that column at the end there.
So the money that we, that we, we received is, it's, it's a race grant, I think, uh, or some, some, some federal money to do that isn't actually going to be a part of the 25 million?
No, it's, it's strictly for a planning grant. It's, it's a planning grant, not a preliminary engineering or a design grant. While it will give you some conceptual drawings, you'll still need to go get survey and start the design process.
Okay. So that's why there's no dollars shown. Okay. Uh, and then the, the, the other one that I had a question on is the, uh, the, the, uh, Lakewood Station non-motorized access improvements, the 115th Court Southwest to the pedestrian crossing at, at Kendrick Street. And, um, that, that project sort of runs, um, kind of from the Habitat Humanities Store back there. But is, is it actually a roadway or is it only going to be a non-motorized path?
So the city is going to, as part of the sound transit Lakewood Station access improvement, the city is going to improve 115th from Bridgeport to the cul-de-sac at the end. Is that the, that the project you're referring to? From there, sound transit is going to pick up in the railway, a non-motorized path from there to the station.
So in the description where it says 115th tis pedestrian crossing at Kendrick Street, only part of it, part of that is a roadway, but we're not going to be extending a roadway that whole way. We're just going to provide the, 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 the last portion of that is going to only be a pedestrian path to be able to go and do that. And that's still the plan that we've agreed to with sound transit, even though we're going to do the work on both sections.
We're only going to do the work within the city's right of way. So 115th from Bridgeport to the end of the cul-de-sac, we're going to rebuild that road with curb gutter sidewalk on it. Sound transit and take it to the point of the sound transit railway. Sound transit even needs to buy a small portion of right of way between their railway and that cul-de-sac. And then build the sidewalk and we will connect to that point.
Okay, but the other sound transit funded roadways, we're going to, while we're going to take their money, we're actually going to do the work ourselves.
Correct. And as, as with this 115th street, it's a portion of it. So it's, it's split into half. The city is going to do part of it with
Coming from South Transit to do our work, but we're not going to plan and, and contract for the other.
Not for the portion within the sound transit right of way. So there's a
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else on this? Any else on this? Great. Thank you. Well, that concludes the items for discussion at tonight's study session agenda. Items tentatively scheduled for the May 19th. Whole city council meeting are on page two of your agenda packet and they are thorough, uh, including public hearings on the 2025 comprehensive plan amendments that we reviewed tonight, as well as the multifamily tax exemption residential target area matter and a few other things like the business showcase and proclamation. So, um, as I will mention in my council comments, I will be at a national transportation conference that Monday night with, on behalf of Pierce Transit as our designated commissioner on Pierce Transit. So you will be running that meeting on the 19th? Yeah. So, yeah, you'll be chairing that meeting. Okay? The 19th of May, excuse me, did I say June? It meant May. It's, it's next Monday night, the May 19th city council agenda. Sorry about that. So we, uh, at this time, we'll have brief reports by the city manager, followed by brief council comments. So we can go into our executive session. So Mr. Caffield.
Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, counsel. Just a few updates for you. First, I'd like to, um, recognize our finance team for, uh, once again, being recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association with the Triple Crown Award, which is, um, um, a very prestigious honor and it recognizes the fact that the city has been recognized with a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our annual comprehensive financial report. Also our distinguished budget presentation award for our current budget and for the popular annual financial report that the city does every year. Um, this honor reflects an exceptional commitment to financial transparency, accountability and excellence in local government finance. And it is an incredible accomplishment, uh, just to receive one of these awards is, um, is, is quite impressive. However, um, for the city to receive all through is certainly exceptional. And it starts with, um, I just wanted to recognize our deputy, um, city manager, Todd Kraus and all of our finance team. But of course the leadership from the city council, our executive leadership team and our staff who day in and day out ensure that the city's finances are, um, are properly, um, taken care of. Um, secondly, as I reported last week, um, there's an opportunity for us to Secondly, as I reported last week, there's an opportunity for us to partner with our sister city Gim Hay and potentially and bring over a K-pop band as part of Summerfest. And I know I had gone over the financing of that with you last week. The council then was okay with us going back to LTAC to receive some lodging tax money. So that happened last week. LTAC met and they have made a recommendation to appropriate nine thousand dollars in support of this endeavor. And this action for council consideration will come forward as part of your July seventh, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting, given the timing under state law that needs to occur between LTAC making a recommendation and council action. Also, last week at your council meeting, representatives from the Buffalo Soldiers Museum came to talk about their Labor Day Festival. And just a friendly reminder that Mayor, maybe under council comments, you could maybe give us some direction on whether or not you want to appropriate some funding. Just as a reminder, the last two years, the city councils appropriated twenty-five hundred dollars in ARPA funds in support of this event, which is held over in Tacoma on Labor Day. But again, it's for the benefit of our veterans and their service members. Actually, for our veterans as well as current service members and their families. I would say the two option is to, you know, continue with the twenty-five hundred dollar contribution or perhaps consider a thousand dollar contribution. The difference this year is that the funding will have to come from your general fund since ARPA funds are no longer available. And then lastly, as it relates to your calendar, the upcoming event is our youth fishing event over at Harry Todd Park, which will be this Saturday kicking off at eight AM through through noon, again, over at Harry Todd Park. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Coughfield. Any questions? Mr. Pearson.
No questions, just a comment. I I would agree with Mr. Coughfield's comments about the Buffalo Soldiers contributions and would be fine with a thousand dollars out of the general fund for that. So that'd be my recommendation there.
Mr. Laura Sella, do you have a point on that?
I was just going to echo the same thing. I think because our funding source has changed, but we still want to support them. A thousand dollars seems appropriate.
Looks like we've got consensus for that, Mr. Coughfield.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, let's turn to council comments. We'll start with Mr. Boki.
Another great week in Lakewood. Went to the game farm on Saturday. Even though it wasn't a city event, it was really the school district event. I got somehow got roped into it by by somebody who lives in my home who said, well, it would be great for you to come over and work. And and it and it really is remarkable. It really has turned into, if you remember over the years, there was so much Scotch room. There was so little Scotch room now. A lot of it's just against the road, kind of in the in the right of way, really the the place itself, Alan Billingsley's leadership on that has been incredible, right? And the Clover Park Rotary was there and a lot of kids from the school district, including the youth council. And I don't want to steal his thunder, but Chase Washington from our youth council has big announcement for us. And he got accepted by Harvard.
Wow.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
It's not Western, but you know. It'll do in a pinch. And but and so but it is a big deal and I guess he has accepted.
That's great.
So his plan now is to go to Harvard in the fall, which is incredible, right? Really neat. But anyway, it was a good event and I really always talk about Alan Billingsley and the work and the effort that he's put into that in the Clover Park Rotary and the school district now, right? Because they bring a lot of labor on those on those Saturdays and and the state, you know, give the state credit for really being very supportive and they have their folks there doing doing work. And so it's really turned into a nice community asset and so that was my my main thing.
Very good.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Boki. We'll flip across the aisle to Mr. Brandstetter.
I'm good for this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. How about Councilmember Laura Sella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing that I want to thank our planning commission for for showing up and sitting through this this lengthy session that we've had that we are about halfway through. So thank you.
Yes. Mr. Pearson.
I would echo Mr. Laura Sella's comments and nothing else for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell.
So much echoing. I am echoing all the same thing too. And thank you guys for being here and just giving us really great information to help us, you know, do the right thing for Lakewood. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank you guys. You guys do a lot of work and we push it back at you and you work with it and send it back to us. So we appreciate all you do because it is, it takes a lot to make a decision. So appreciate your time. Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Last week I did have Thomas Middle School came to tour our building. So it was, it went really well. They didn't have, I think they only had three or four students, but they were able, we allowed them to sit at our, on the dais. And they got the picture taken and we talked about the things that we do as far as policies and that showed them around. They wanted to see Dr. Thomas's picture, which is out there in the hallway. So we were able to so they were in awe. You know, they their little eyes just light up when they see things like that. And so some of the the toastmaster, everything was exciting to them. So it was a good tour. And one thing that I did forget to mention was to, because some of you did attend the Dr. Claudia Thomas Community Service Award Gala. I wanted to thank you for that. And last week I was able to present a check for two thousand dollars to Clover Park Tech College. Yeah. More to come.
Very good. Thank you for touring the young students. I think they'd be more in awe of what we do if they stayed till midnight. Yeah, it'd be great. Okay, just a few little comments. Thanks to the planning commission members, you know, again, I think we've said it over and over again, we really do appreciate your work and your input and your diverse opinions. It really makes a difference for all of us here. Kudos to the finance staff on the Triple Crown Award. You know, I I brag often about Lakewood and our fine staff and all the good things we do and certainly keeping a stable financial ship and excellent financial stewardship is something that should never go without mention. In terms of events, I was at the Pierce County Prairie Brook this last week. There were a lot of elected leaders there, so it was good to kind of be representing. I then went to the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting. We had a good chat over there about all things going on in the neighborhood. I can fill Mr. Coughfield in on a few issues that they'd like to take a look at. I did chair the LTAC meeting that Mr. Coughfield described, which provided the funding recommendation, which will come forward to you for that additional funding for the the K-pop band. Even though I can't spell K-pop, but it should be a great event at Summerfest. So it'll be, yeah, we're we're going to have a good time there. Yeah. And then I spent most of the afternoon on Friday doing interviews for the open position for the Lake Management District Advisory Committee.
Will draw people.
Yeah, and there were like interestingly enough, about seven applications for that. And so I interviewed those who all showed up. And Kurt Spingath will be my recommendation to you for appointment for the last position. He is currently the member of the Lake Stilicum Improvement Club. So he sees this as a good crossover and I agree with communication with regard to the Lake Management District Advisory Committee. So that'll be coming forward to you. As I indicated, I'm going to be out on the nineteenth with the CEO of Pierce Transit at the National Transportation Conference with Congress and members of Congress. That'll be interesting on Monday. And Tuesday, I'll be back Wednesday. So I will hand over the gavel to you, Deputy Mayor, with regard to the myriad of tasks on the agenda for the nineteenth. There is the RTA public hearing and just so the folks listening at home, you probably heard the robust discussion tonight. You know, we're not here to make any votes tonight, obviously, or take any action, but I I heard, I think some consensus around the planning commission's recommendation on the Gravely Lake RTA. And I would probably echo and add my voice to their recommendation. So if that makes you breathe easier or not, feel free to come to the nineteenth and make your public comment. And we'll see how it goes. Okay, so as long as you're all here, you get to hear us say that the council is now going to recess into executive session for approximately it says thirty minutes. It's going to take at least sixty minutes. I'll start with sixty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten sub one sub G to evaluate the qualifications of applicants for public employment, namely the city manager position. The city council will not take action following the executive session. And there will be a special meeting set to follow the study session. Yeah, I didn't yell fire yet.
Okay.
Turn the study session agenda for this May 12, 2025. So I will now call to order the Lakewood City Council special meeting agenda for this Monday, May 12, 2025 at 10:50 p.m. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Bransdatter.
Here.
Just say here.
Hello, here.
Bransdatter. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Mayor Wellin.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. As indicated on the special meeting agenda, the sole item for discussion tonight is our consideration of the myriad of applicants we've received for the city manager position. And our intent tonight is to select, based upon the qualifications of the individuals, to select a limited number of individuals to move on in the recruitment process to the next set of interviews. So in executive session, we generally discuss the qualifications that we are looking for, consistent with the profile that we created with the help of our consultant, GMP consultants. And we reviewed all of the applicants that were forwarded to us in light of our desired qualifications and in light of their individual qualifications. So now, councilmembers, I'd like some general discussion on which candidates, based upon their qualifications, you would like to move forward. And we have, to respect the confidentiality of some of these applicants, or all the applicants, we have numbered them, so we'll refer to them by their candidate number, one through 13 in the packet that we reviewed of the 37 that made application to the city. So candidates one through 13. How about Mr. Laura Sella? Do you have any thoughts on any of the candidates, based on their qualifications, that you'd like to move forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, of the candidates that we reviewed, I felt a number of them met the qualifications from my standard. I have a top five or so, candidates number three, five, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay, just a minute. So you are suggesting a top five of the 13 in the cold packet, numbers three, five, seven, eight, and nine. Let me just take a look real quick. Councilmembers, do you, similarly looking at number three, believe that candidate number three has the qualifications sufficient for us to move candidate number three forward? Do you have interest in moving candidate three forward?
I have interest in moving candidate three forward.
Yes, we have. And I would be interested in moving candidate three forward as well. Are you okay with that, Mr. Bokey? Candidate three will be moved forward. I'm going to jump just for a moment since we're on Mr. Laura Sella's initial list. Candidate five, based upon the qualifications of candidate five, we have additional interest in moving that candidate forward to the next round.
I'll second number five.
Anyone else? We have consensus on moving candidate five forward based on qualifications, meeting the position. Okay, that's two. And then Mr. Laura Sella indicated candidate number seven. Any other thoughts on candidate seven, based upon his or her qualifications? Anyone interested in interviewing candidate seven, in addition to Mr. Laura Sella? Make sure we have a mic on there, Mr. Bransdatter, the mic, so we can pick it up on the record here.
Yes, I think candidate seven has got a career path and experience that leads to being considered. Yes, I think candidate seven has got a career path and experience that leads to being considered.
So I think we had three or four of us on that. I would as well for candidate seven. I'm fine with that. Anyone else?
Candidate seven was not on my top five.
Not in your top five. Okay, so let's just go around the room again and get some consensus on moving candidate seven forward, Mr. Bokey?
Yes.
Yes.
I was as well.
I'm in now.
Okay. So we have consensus right now for candidate seven to be in the top five. This may change as we, you know, go around. Okay, so candidate number eight was next on Mr. Laura Sella's list. Thoughts on candidate eight, moving forward to our potential top five based on qualifications?
Based on qualifications, candidate eight was not on my top list.
He did not have eight on my top five list.
I also did not have eight on my top five.
Anyone else? I would have moved candidate eight forward for an interview, but it does not seem like that is the consensus. Okay, so candidate eight does not move forward to the top five at this time. How about candidate number nine, based on qualifications? This is again Mr. Laura Sella, he's helping us with the first iteration. So anyone else feel that number, candidate number nine, has the qualifications that we are seeking that allows us to move forward?
I would move nine forward for an interview. He has some qualifications. And while they're unique, they fit us, fit Lakewood well.
That would be two folks in favor of moving candidate nine forward.
I felt candidate nine was lacking some of the key components of a successful candidate.
Okay. Mr. Bokey?
I think there's stronger candidates who are still, need to be talked about.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, did you have a preference on the qualifications of candidate nine?
I agree that I would not move him forward based on, based on the other candidates' qualifications.
Okay, so we had two in favor of moving candidate nine forward, and that's not enough of a consensus right now. So we'll go to the top, let's go to the top of the packet on candidate number one. Do we have consensus, or I shouldn't say consensus, do we have an interest in moving candidate number one forward based upon his or her qualifications?
I have an interest in moving candidate one forward based on their qualifications.
So that would be Mr. Pearson, the deputy mayor.
I also would move candidate number one forward.
I'm supportive of moving candidate one forward.
And I believe that candidate one has the qualifications that we're looking for.
Looks like we have consensus in moving candidate one forward for the next interview. So that would be, we have now four of five candidates. We can turn to candidate number two in the packet.
Candidate two possesses the experience and the that we're looking for in this position.
I would agree that candidate number two has a good amount of the qualifications that we set forward.
I would move candidate two forward for an interview.
And I had, I had listed him moving forward.
Okay, and I would as well. So that gives us good consensus in moving candidate number two forward as well. So that means we've got candidates one, two, three, five, and seven at present. So that's five candidates. Let's just double check. So we've looked at candidate three, candidate three is moving forward. How about candidate four? Now we have five. It doesn't mean you're limited to the top five, but again, be mindful of the process as we start bringing folks in and interviewing. It's going to, you know, if you give each, if you give each candidate an hour in a council interview, that's a five-hour plus day just for us. But that doesn't mean you can't. So I'm just asking, is there interest in adding candidate four based on?
I am not interested in adding candidate four.
Not interested?
Not.
Is there anyone interested in moving candidate four forward?
I am interested in moving candidate four forward.
Okay, so we have one yes, one no.
I am also interested in moving candidate four forward.
Okay, that's two yeses. Anyone?
I had marked him as a yes forward.
You had a yes to bring her forward, him or her forward?
Candidate four was not in my top list of qualified candidates.
Okay, so that's three to two.
Candidate four does, does have some nice background that we're, we're, we're looking for, but I just think there's stronger candidates overall. That's my feeling.
You're kind of a maybe leaning toward a no. And based on qualifications. Based on qualifications. Okay, so it's up to me on whether or not to move candidate four forward. I'm going to say yes for now, but that doesn't mean we can't whittle down six to five or four. But I'm going to say yes to candidate number four for present, at present. So it means we have one, two, three, four, five, and seven. Just make sure. Nine we've looked at. So I assume, let's just.
Mr. Mayor, I have that you have six, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen remaining.
Yes. So candidate number six, do we have any interest in moving candidate six forward based upon qualifications?
I don't have any interest in moving six forward based on qualifications.
No interest on my part.
Okay. Candidate number, when then we go to candidate number ten, any interest, while has some qualifications, as we've discussed, we have to work on whittling down. Is there any significant interest in moving candidate ten forward to the packet?
I do not have any significant interest in moving them forward.
I feel that the other candidates were more qualified than candidate ten.
I would not move candidate ten forward.
I would not move ten forward.
I don't see a consensus to move that one forward. How about candidates eleven or twelve? Or thirteen for that matter. So we got the last ones, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Any interest in either one of those three based on qualifications?
Not on my part.
No, I don't have any interest in moving those forward. I would say that to all the candidates that applied, we've got a really good candidate pool. So I do feel like we're lucky with, with the pool that we have. And it took a lot of effort to kind of go through these all and, and, and really hone in on just a few kind of really key items, so.
Well, and just, you know, based on qualifications, we, we discussed, and we certainly put in the profile that we're looking for folks that have city manager experience that potentially have good economic development background or qualifications. Some connection with military communities, or have military experience in their backgrounds. What other qualifications do we talk about that I may be missing in the late hour here?
Budgeting background. Finance background, and then I also focused a bit on understanding the culture of the Pacific Northwest.
Right. Okay. So in light of that, do you want to whittle down the six that you've identified to five, four, or three? Do you want to limit ourselves to five, four, or three candidates?
Can we ask?
Maybe we can reach out to W, Councilmember Pearson.
I would, I would just say that in, in light of whittling the list officially down, if we could put two people on like a reserve list from our top six, that would help kind of whittle down the formal list, but keep two that are clearly identified if other folks drop out or whatever that they can, we can bring them in off the bench.
What do you think?
Yeah, I just, I just would love your.
Perspective on this.
Yeah.
Debbie's got the floor real quick, there, Mr. Bransdeter.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, generally we will say three to five. I think if you want to bring all six in, it can be done. I wouldn't go more than that, just to get a full day. If you want to hold one in reserve or two, you can also do that. So it's really up to the council. I, you know, I think you can get through six, but it's going to be fun. It's going to be eight or nine-hour day, yeah. You know, but like I said, or you could take as, the council member Pearson was suggesting, if you want to take one or two and put those as a contingency, that's also an option for the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. And I, and, and I would agree with that. I think we, we have to get down to four or five. I, I'm also, I'm, I'm fine with the reserve component because I'm thinking the interviews are not scheduled, I don't think, till next month. And I'm guessing maybe, I mean, these are very highly qualified candidates. And I'm guessing from prior experience, and it's been a long time since that prior experience, that one or two of these people will, will fall off. And not badly in, in, in a way, meaning they'll find, they'll find other employment because they're, they may be in.
Right.
I'm guessing, I mean, I'm, I don't know this, but if they're with us here, right, they're, they may or may not be out there looking for other, other employment, and chances are one or two will drop off, so.
So keep it to six is what I hear you saying, for now.
I think I would do the reserve. I think I would put at least one person in reserve and say five, and then that person would move up because I think one of the five, at least one of the five probably will fall off. I don't know.
Mr. Bransdeter and then Mr. Pearson.
I would put one, two, three, five, and seven, and put four in reserve.
I concur with that.
Five and seven, would you say that again, Mike? One, two, three, five?
One, two, three, five, and seven, and with four as a candidate in reserve.
I'd be okay, I would have probably put two, three, four, and seven, and put five in reserve, but I'm, you know, see what happens with the consensus here. Based on the economic development qualifications of candidate.
I would, I would agree with you on that, Mayor. That would be my preference is to put five in reserve and put four in.
Vice versa?
Well, what you just said.
Yeah, I think five was the one, take a look real quick, because the one I would probably put in reserve.
Yes, five in reserve and put four.
You did put two.
One, two, three, five is, one, two, three, four, seven would be my preference.
Okay.
And that's what you just.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on that? I'm, again, we're open here, so one. Do color coding here now, one, two, three, four, and seven, is that what we said, Councilmember Bell? With five in reserve?
And that was, yeah, what you.
I'm, I'm good with that, and if we wanted to go down to a formal four folks with two in reserves, then I would put both five and seven in reserves. So I'm fine with what you guys said. If we wanted to get down to four, then that would be my other.
Seven, you would put in reserve? As opposed to four? Okay. Oh, I get it, I get it, got it, got it, got it, okay. What's your thought, folks? Do you want to limit it down to four as opposed to five?
Keep it at five.
Yeah, I would, again, keep it with five and.
And I guess, and, and I, and I guess that, I think, four and five, of the six, four and five are the two candidates with the least city manager experience. And so, you know, and, and while I would put four in reserve, I'm okay with putting five in reserve and keeping four on it. You know, they're, they're, they're both people that we're substituting economic development experience for with city manager experience.
So based on the qualifications of the, the candidates, and the interest in reducing the number for the next interview to a logical, manageable amount, it appears we will move forward one candidates, one, two, three, four, and seven to the next round of interviews.
I, I was just picking up on, I got an eye from one of you, looked over at me like, is this number okay? And I'm just going to underscore what your consultant has told you. This really is your process. And yes, if you get much past six, it's going to be a really long day. But it's really, this is an important pick. So if, if it's a number that you guys are good with, everyone will swing with that.
Okay.
There's not like a magic legal number to this.
So Debbie, do you have that, that's candidates one, two, three, four, and seven primary with candidate number five in reserve, I think I heard?
I do have a question.
Yep.
Before I make a comment.
Sure.
Weren't we planning to do it over two days?
Yeah, but the first day, and Debbie can speak to this, but the first day, I believe, is internal panels of staff.
Yeah, on the draft, we had a city tour, a welcome lunch, some internal panels, and a public reception on the first day. The second day, depending on how this all shifts out, it definitely is the city council interviews. Potentially, we could do an inter, internal panel on that day too, if we are going to have more than one, so. Or if we needed to, just to make it all work.
Some, some, just hear me out, and then we'll, we'll keep working through this because I'm not going to give an opinion right now. Last time, I think we had four. Our goal was four. One dropped before the interview process.
I think so.
And one dropped immediately after the interview process, after some comments were made. So we were down to two.
I know.
And the one guy. I mean, so, so this thing can quickly, right, that's what I'm saying.
The numbers can self-whittle pretty quickly, unfortunately.
So I'm still a fan of five because I think that's a more controllable number. Not, you know, not going to die on this hill though, right? That's my new, that's my new statement. I've used it now twice tonight, so, so stop me from doing that. So I'm not going to do that again. So I, I think, you know, these things tend to work themselves out, and I like five. It seems more manageable. Four is going to be too low, is my feeling. And then six, if they all show up, that becomes, I don't know that I want to be the sixth person.
Yeah, so I guess we're kind of telling you when you make the initial offers to come and interview, you hear back from one of the six that they say, oh gee, I've taken another position, thank you very much. Then we automatically are down to five, right?
Yes, my understanding is number five would only come if one of the other five
Correct.
were to withdraw.
As you know, I was here when that happened last time, and what I would tell you is that you were hiring for one position, and last time, even when it all whittled away, you got a great manager, right? So you make the best. You make the best decision that you can, you trust the advice you're being given on your numbers. And if the whole thing falls apart and you're left with no one, you know what we do? We go back and start again. It's, it's, it's not a test that you have to finish by a certain time. It's, you're picking somebody, well, you know, you have a deputy manager, there are ways that we can bridge those gaps. You, we will be fine while you take your time to pick the right person.
Very, very good.
Don't feel pressured to try and, you know, second guess how many people might drop out, is all I would say.
That sounds good. Mr. Pearson and then Mr. Bransdeter.
I just, I, I'm good with what Mr. Bokey said, five, the five people that we had talked about, which was left, leaving out candidate number five, I believe, right?
In reserve.
In reserve, yep.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm five. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm five, with, with five as a number and the, 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 the candidates that, that we've identified with, 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 with a six, uh, in, in reserve is, is, is fine with me.
Okay. So at this, at this point, uh, next steps from Mr. Randstad.
Yeah, I had one other thing is that, um, I, I guess I, I did not concur with the stakeholder list that was put together in terms of having a stakeholder panel. And my, my reason for not concurring with the list and wanting to perhaps look at that more is that while I agree someone from the school district and a, 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 a nonprofit leader and, uh, and, and, and someone from the authority department are good folks to be on that list, and that the other people are good list, but all of the other people are city officials. Okay, and I think the stakeholder list should not include city official, otherwise it just becomes a choir.
Where's that page? Cause I had a comment on one of them too. There we go. Okay, so
And I was just gonna say, that stakeholder list, that was a list of stakeholders that we spoke to in development of the profile, so that's
Yeah. So there's one that I would remove right now, um, Ms. Fong, simply because she's a filed candidate for council. I think that, to, to be fair to all the other candidates for council, none of them should be on the interview panel. Alice Fong. Yep. So if there were any others, did you have any other problems with the profile stakeholder list, Mr. Randstad?
Well, the, 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 the individuals that you've appointed to boards and commission are city officials. And I don't think we should have any of them. I would, and then the, the, the other thing that I would look is that there is no community leader from a faith-based group on that, that, um, that
They're no business.
I, 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 I would say looking for a younger person, you know, and I think, you know, that, that there are some people who perhaps are in, in, in the community or in college nearby who were former youth council members, Mr. Elliott comes to mind. Okay, it'd be someone that would, it would be a good person to put onto that. And, um, there, there isn't really anybody from the medical community, even though that's a major sector in, in, in our community.
Maybe the CEO of St. Clair, if we could get her
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Could, could you do that?
Important part of the community. I would think we would need to add a couple of business owners as well, uh, you know, someone like Dander who's been asked to do
Man, business leader from the international, uh, community.
Like Mr. Wuhan?
Mr. Wuhan would, would be, you know, a, yeah, a good choice.
Wuhan would be great. I don't have a real problem with some of these planning commission people simply because, A, they are residents, yeah, they're city officials, but they're residents that have some knowledge and participation skin in the game. Uh, Pierce Transit is not. I would probably put a Pierce Transit person like, uh, if Mike Griffiths is willing to do it. CEO. She's here, yep. I'd put a couple of business owners down there though, like, uh, maybe Dander, uh, maybe somebody we've done a business showcase about. You know, we, Drangshol, we did a business showcase. Yeah, Corey Campbell, owner of Classic Chassis.
Those are all good suggestions.
Yeah. I think that would be good. So we can talk more, Debbie, on that and finalize that for you, uh, and then we can circulate that. So I think our work tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is done. Uh, we can provide more details as we get forward. As I understand, next steps, uh, our consultant will then reach out to these folks and confirm their interest still and ensure that they're interested in moving forward. Obviously, some arrangements will have to be made because some of them are from out of state. I think we should keep these binders unless the city attorney says otherwise.
In our possession.
I think you should keep them, and my understanding from Michael Vargas is that they are to be kept pretty tightly under wraps. I think you've already been advised by your consultant that, you know, you're at a sensitive time until it's time for people to feel comfortable that they're actually wanting to come forward and be known as a candidate.
Okay, that works for me.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also say, wait, yeah, well, we're in a, or, or no, we're actually in a meeting. Um, you can make the substitutions based upon what we agreed. Right? That's all, I, I will tell you that Debbie can
Are you talking about the panelists or the candidates?
No, the can, the candidates.
Okay.
And the panelists, I guess.
Okay.
I, I mean, I would give you that, but I mean, we can't keep meeting and talking about all this, so we have the substitute just in case someone falls out. You're, you're allowed to make that, and just tell us, just tell us that that's occurred, and I would, I would give you broad authority on the
We do have the ad hoc committee.
The
Work on that if need be, yep.
The citizen groups or the stakeholder groups.
That works for me. So we will coordinate with the ad hoc committee, and then we can report out, if need be, on finalizing the stakeholder interview groups. That'd be great. Well, thank you all for staying. Uh, I will go ahead and adjourn the city council special meeting for this Monday, May twelve, twenty twenty-five at eleven twenty-two P M.